Hold on, hold on.
I think we are live now.
Yes, we are. Just give me a second. Hi, folks that are joining us on YouTube. We will be with you in one minute. We had a little technical difficulty and I think we have resolved the issue. So as you folks are coming on, just know that we are live right now and we will start the meeting.
Are we ready to begin?
Um, we have, yeah, I think we are. Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to start the meeting. My name is Dave Hamburger and I want to welcome folks who are either joining us via Zoom or live stream to our September Exeter Township School Board Voting Meeting. This is a, an opportunity for us each month, you know, to review district business and and we are doing it via Zoom for obvious reasons due to the current pandemic. We're going to start off with our roll call. I'm going to ask Anne Guiddish to call roll for the purpose of attendance.
Mr. Arons?
Here.
Mr. Fidler?
Here.
Dr. Herring?
Here.
Dr. Hamburger?
Here.
Mr. Chapina?
Here.
Dr. McLendon?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Stratton?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
All members are present.
Thanks, Mrs. Guiddish. A few things I want to just kind of indicate before we get started in the meeting this evening. The board did conduct an executive session this past week, September 10th, for the purposes of Act 44, Safety and Security Matters, and then another executive session earlier this evening to address personnel matters. Also want to talk for a second about public comment. We do have a section on our board agenda that allows people from the community to to submit comments to the board. And I'm, will depend upon someone within the administration who might be able to direct folks at this time to the process that they would use to, to submit a public comment.
Sure. If you have a public comment, you can send it by email to questions@myexeter.org.
Thank you, Joe. Also, a reminder for board members that we'll be pursuing a consent agenda this evening. The consent agenda is a, a way to conduct a meeting whereby, you know, we consolidate items under each topic and take a board consent vote to save time in the meeting process. With few exceptions, most of the content that we've seen here today has been discussed publicly at our board workshop meeting, which was last Tuesday. However, if any board member would like to pull out any item, you know, within the agenda for an individual vote, just please indicate that prior to the, prior to, when, when do we get to that individual section? At this time, we're going to move into our agenda and we will, I'll ask Dr. Minor or superintendent to provide us with the superintendent's report. Dr. Minor.
Dr. Hamburger, this evening I would like to provide an update regarding where the district stands relative to pandemic planning and a possible return to brick and mortar for the district. Our pandemic planning team met last week. We have added an additional physician to our team. We are beginning the planning process for what a return to brick and mortar would look like. We anticipate having that plan for the board in early October. We will make a decision in October based on the conditions of, or recommend, I should say, to the board and ask the board to vote on a return to school based on the conditions relative to the virus in our community at that time. But regardless of the specific date of a return to brick and mortar, our team is forging ahead with plans for that opening. In terms of the planning itself, we did have plans, as you recall, in July, we moved forward with the purchase of PPE, hand sanitizer, Plexiglas, those sorts of things, and we continue to stockpile and have those. And so now our, our primary focus is on the instructional model that would be utilized, how the day would work with hybrid potentially or, or other types of models. And so we are examining those, working with our instructional team, our instructional leadership and our pandemic team to come up with the specifics of instructional planning. But again, I want to emphasize that our physical planning in terms of health and safety issues was already completed in July. And so we would update that based on new recommendations and guidance for masking at all times, those sort of things that have come out of the state. But the core of our planning would remain the same in terms of social distancing, hand wash stations, that sort of thing. So we will continue to update the board, but I wanted to just apprise you of the fact that our pandemic team is meeting and our instructional teams are meeting to look at brick and mortar reentry planning. Regardless of what the timing is of a brick and mortar reentry plan, we would continue to offer a virtual option for families throughout this school year. And then, you know, what would happen in, in next school year would be determined, you know, sometime in the spring or over the summer in terms of where we were in offering a virtual option relative to the pandemic. Thank you, Dr. Hamburger.
Thanks, Dr. Minor. I'd like to ask a quick question. You said, Dr. Minor, that conditions relative to the virus on our community, what metric are you referring to?
Mr. Chapina, thank you for that question. One of the things that has been, I think, a struggle for all superintendents in school districts is the fact that the metrics themselves continue to change. The guidance around the metrics continue to change. And so there's not a specific metric that I'm even certain will be in place by October. However, at this point in time, the metrics that districts are being asked to use by PDE and the Department of Health are the virus spread in the community in the last 14-day average, and they are ranking that spread as substantial, moderate, or low. And then they're telling schools the type of opening that they may have in each of the levels of spread. Right now, our community is listed as moderate. And so our potential is for, under that PDE DOH guidance, a, a hybrid or a full virtual model. If we would go down to low, then the choices would be a full brick and mortar or hybrid. And if we would go up to substantial, then the only choice would be full virtual. So at this point in time, that's the metric that PD is asking schools to use. Again, I, I am always, you know, want to make a point of saying that that's true as of September 15th. I truly don't know what metrics PDE will be asking us to use in October. They have changed frequently in just the 10 weeks or so that I've been with the district.
The metric itself, does that come from the Department of Health?
Yes. So the Department of Health is producing the actual positivity rate that school districts are asked to use, and then the PDE is setting instructional models to that specific rate of spread in the community.
And even though PDD is asking to follow that, are all school districts uniformly following that? Or are districts using other, and I'm talking about statewide or what you might know?
Yes. So districts are not all uniformly following that. Even within the county, there are districts who are in moderate. Right now, the county itself is, when individual districts, one of the things that's challenging is that the state doesn't put out any metrics by district. They put them out at the county level and by zip code. And so even to try to gauge where your individual school district is, there's some website aggregators out there that suggest that some school districts are at different levels within the county itself, but school districts are not, the, the PDE is not, it's not a mandate. And so there are school districts who are opting to not follow the guidance.
And Dr. Minor, one last question. Is it, is it factually true that about 70% of our teachers or more are in the classroom?
So just to clarify, Mr. Chapina, our teachers have the option to choose to teach from home. We have approximately 25% that are fully working out of the classroom all day, all week. We have approximately another 40 to 50% that are teaching out of the classroom or coming into the classroom on a regular basis. And then we have the remaining percentage that's exclusively working from home. So on any given day, you know, between 50 and 70% of teachers are doing some amount of their schoolwork or teaching in the buildings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Minor, are we in touch with the other schools that are right now in the hybrid program to see how they're faring?
Yes, Dr. Herring. The, the BCIU Director, Dr. Hackman, has weekly, sometimes we've even met as often as twice a week, depending on what's happening. Meetings, we had one today of all of the county superintendents, as well as the Director of the BCTC and IU staff. And as a superintendent group, we discuss what's happening in all of our schools. Some, I'm trying to think, the numbers change all the time, but there are several schools who are full virtual in Berks County. There are several schools that are hybrid, and I believe that there are two that are full open right now. And so we do discuss what's happening. Of course, you know, it's reported in the news. You know, when schools have had to quarantine, some things aren't reported in the news. But we do discuss the challenges, you know, the, you know, things that are going well. We ask each other questions as a superintendent group all the time. So you know, one of our goals as a group in the county, and again, I would compliment Dr. Hackman and the, and the BCIU, is to keep superintendents in communication with one another. As you know, within the county, we have great variability in district the size of Reading, a district the size of Antietam. So there's, there's complexity in our county. It's a, you know, large number of school districts, but we work hard as a superintendent team through the IU to stay in constant communication with one another.
Dr. Minor, when you're in communication with these other schools, when we see a student has tested positive for a school district, are we to assume that we're getting all the notifications of that happening? Or there's more happening that we're not seeing?
Yeah. So one of the things that's, that's interesting is, you know, there are certainly cases, you know, up to the start of the school year in the student population that weren't even receiving tests. Now that tests are more widely available, I think more students in particular are getting tested. I think initially, a lot of pediatricians were taking the stance that unless you had a high-risk family member, they were just going to do a presumed positive and not actually test. But now schools are asking for, you know, some kind of medical documentation for schools to return, for students to return. Excuse me. So what, in terms of reporting, the, there is a rapid response center that has now only recently been set up through the BCIU. Each school district is allowed to designate two people who are allowed to contact the rapid response center at the BCIU. And then that call is vetted there and then forwarded on to DOH in the, at the state level if it's deemed to be of great enough concern. And then ultimately, what they call their EpiTeam, their epidemiological team in the state, then it tells schools how to proceed. At this point, again, the guidance is that if between two and five students in a single building have a positive test or staff members that that, that building closed for a week. If it's a single student or a single staff member positivity, then, you know, that district may just handle, handle that internally. So you wouldn't necessarily know that. And of course, it also relies on the fact that those cases are in fact being reported to the school districts, either directly by the families or by DOH. And sometimes that can be, you know, a little bit of a delay in the process. But I don't, I don't know that it's fair to presume that the community as a whole is aware of every case that's happening in every school at this point.
Any other questions for Dr. Minor? Thanks, Dr. Minor.
You're welcome.
So we're going to move to the next section of our agenda and we're going to introduce Peter Edelman, who is our bond counsel from Stevenson Lee, and Jamie Schlesinger, Director from PFM. And these gentlemen will be reviewing the 2020 A and B General Obligation Bonds Resolution. So gentlemen, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. I guess, Peter, I'll start and you can, you can come in after me if that's all right. I don't know if someone can put up the presentation for me. There you go. Great. Well, I think you've all remember me. I've been around for the last few months talking about, you know, opportunities to refinance considerations for any potential new money. A few months ago, we worked on a refinancing that saved a significant amount of money. So we're back again to talk again about an option here to refinance the Series A of 2012 bonds, as well as a consideration to borrow some additional money for some capital projects. So if you want to just flip to the second page, go fast. If you scroll toward the bottom of that, I was at the point at that bottom of that page. So you've heard me say this before, but interest rates have been, you know, quite low for a number of months. Right when we started the quarantine, rates dropped to, you know, historic lows. There was a point where it jumped up dramatically because investors kind of disappeared. But over the last several months, due to some calming of the markets, some considerations of impact of COVID and other economic conditions, we've seen interest rates remain, you know, relatively low, you know, near the historical lows that we've, that we've been accustomed to the number of years at this point. So we're looking at a potential refinancing that could save some significant money for the, for the school district. The snapshot on the bottom, you kind of shows that that market, it's been pretty consistent over the last few months. It has crept up a little bit over the last few weeks. I think that's mostly due to, you know, some potential uncertainty, you know, with, related to the the election, you know, concerns where things are going. So we're trying to push toward, you know, pricing some bonds as quickly as possible to get in before, you know, there's any potential, you know, changes or modifications to, to the market as we speak. So that said, you know, obviously it's been a great time to finance and we, you know, looked into what we're going to do. And I think it's a great time to jump through. You can turn to the next page. We've done this in the past. Peter prepared a parameters resolution. We do this to provide us as a team flexibility to go to market and lock in rates on a particular day that's not just on a board meeting night. As I mentioned, you know, if the market is moving around a little bit, and as we're working toward finishing up the rating process and among other things, you know, we're going to be able to get, you know, to the market in a fashion that we want to pick a good day to do it. So by authorizing a parameters resolution at, you know, higher interest rate assumptions, higher borrowing amounts and establishing certain criterias, this follows the state guidelines under DCD through the Local Government Unit Debt Act, that multiply allows us to do what we need to do without having come back to the board for another approval. Turn to the next page. So just as a snapshot of your debt, we really did pick off a fair amount of your bonds at the last transaction. So we're looking at columns 12, which is in that bottom section. That is signified with approximately a $20 million issue. That is the Series A of 2012. We would be refinancing that debt. And the board, through many conversations through the Business Functions Committee, has determined there's approximately about $3.5 million worth of potential projects necessary for the capital needs of, of the, of the district. So we're going to ask to consider borrowing that money tonight. Overall, this would really take care of much of your debt, hopefully locking in it, you know, historic lows, and then adding some additional debt for those projects. Overall, the plan would not extend your total debt beyond what it currently is as far as a maturity. So it's going to be relatively short. But it also won't have a huge impact on your, on your overall debt service, despite the fact we're borrowing some additional money. So anyone have any questions on this page? But at this point, I, I think this is about it for a little while until we see any potential refinancings. Turn to the next page. As we've shown before, this is the projected summary of what we think the transactions will look like. We're going to separate this with two different series of, of bonds, the Series A of 2020 and the Series B of 2020. I'll first point to this, the blue section. I know I've pointed this out before, but the previous transaction, which was the series of 2020, the bank loan, we did lock in a relatively low rate, you know, in the 1% range, and we, we save approximately $1.2 million on that transaction. We're building this from a, a complete plan to, to hopefully, you know, not have a major impact on, on your, on your budget with some additional borrowings. So the red column would be the proposed refinancing portion. You can see the way the savings are structured. There's, you know, a little bit of savings in, a little bit in every year. And that, again, the purpose of that is to kind of even things out because we've done so many refinancings the last few years. The goal is to make your overall debt, you know, relatively level for budgeting purposes. So you can see the column on number nine, that would be what your refunding debt would look like after the savings are taken. And you can see, based on some estimates, we're probably going to get somewhere around $1 million net of all costs. You know, hopefully we'll do better than that. But I think it's a good guestimate for right now. On top of that, that extra 3.5, $3.6 million for those capital projects, we would do as a wrap, as we've done before, where we would place that debt essentially in that final year where your debt actually drops off in the '29 fiscal year. So from an incremental impact, it's about a $60,000 annual debt service just on, on that debt. But you can see on column 11, your debt overall would be between, you know, 7.7, it gets to about $8 million overall, just from how we can structure this. As a comparison, when we started the year, if you look at column five, your debt has actually gone down. So the, the combination of these refinancings, we're able to, you know, refinance, refinance that debt and add some additional debt. And there's actually going to be a budgetary decrease, given all the potential refinancings that we've accomplished this year. I'll stop for a second. I know there's a lot of numbers on this page, but again, overall, obviously, you know, we're being prudent here and, you know, refinancing at a good time. The call date is, is coming due. Obviously, rates are at a fantastic point. And again, the, the Business Function Group and the board, if it had been discussing some of these capital needs, I believe the conclusion was approximately, you know, $3.6 million for, for capital projects. Anyone have any questions on this page? Okay. I think there's one more page that we'll just touch on. Again, I alluded to the timing of this. You know, again, the, the time we've spent to, to figure this out, we're about midway through this page. Tonight, we're asking you to consider the parameters resolution that Peter's prepared in a couple of days. Anne and, and the rest of the team are going to go through the rating process and talk about where we stand from, from a financing standpoint and from an economic standpoint. We hope to maintain that the strong double A credit rating. If all goes well and we finish up the necessary documentation, if you want to scroll down to a little bit to the bottom, we, we hope to price the bonds in, in early October, which I think is a great point, which would allow us to have funds available for projects starting in early November and locking in and refinancing that existing debt. So we're pretty much getting close to the, to the finish line here. But, you know, this is just really the legal process. But again, we've done a fair amount of work up to this point to get us to where we are today. The last page, just for purposes of discussion, you can scroll to the next one. As I mentioned, tonight, we are considering a $30 million parameters resolution. Obviously, that is again, higher than what you, we expect. We're probably going to end up somewhere around 23 million. As I mentioned and have done many times, this flexibility is, is very valid and we need to do that because when we price the bonds, we may get some coupons that are higher or lower than what we expect. The key here is we want to be able to adjust principal to make it kind of fit within your, your budgetary needs. So by doing this at a higher amount, that flexibility comes in when, when we do the pricing itself. So I'll stop. Obviously, Peter can jump in. I know he's got some things he can add to this. Certainly, I can answer any questions that may come up about the financing side of things as well. Peter?
Yep. There's no questions for Jamie. I would just mention that the resolution that is before the board tonight will authorize the execution and delivery of all necessary documents with respect to the issuance of the Series A and Series B of 2020 bonds. It authorizes the use of the proceeds to complete the refunding of the 2012 A bonds and provide the additional monies for capital projects for the school district. The resolution was advertised as required by the Debt Act. So it's ready to go if the board is interested in approving it tonight. And as Jamie mentioned, it's set up as a parameter so that it authorizes the maximum principal amount of bonds and maximum interest rate to provide that flexibility to allow PFM to get into the market at the, at the best time possible for the district and capture these low interest rates. Now, certainly, the $1 million of savings is very compelling. And you have the opportunity now, tonight, to approve the resolution to basically author as, author as us to continue proceeding forward with this financing. You did mention a couple of times the consent agenda. This resolution should be approved by roll call, though. I just wanted to highlight that to the board also. That's required by the school code for any debt ordinance or debt resolution. So with that, I'll just open it up to any additional questions.
Jamie, it's Mike Chapina. Just a quick question. Can you explain how people might be able to observe the process once you sort of go to market?
Yeah. So traditionally, we, we've been selling these bonds utilizing an auction service that we host called PFM Auction. Again, I describe it typically as the eBay for municipal bonds. That particular auction process is done, we pick a day. The bond underwriters are invited to review the offering document, the preliminary official statement review about the credit of the, of the district. We put together what is called an invitation to bid, which essentially provides the, you know, security, the information, call provisions, kind of everything they need to know when, for the bidding platform itself. That typically would happen on, on, on a day that we, we find is, is a good day, you know, again, probably sometime early October. That auction, unlike eBay, which usually sometimes lasts for weeks, lasts approximately 15 minutes. So we put this up on our auction, you know, sometime around 11 o'clock usually, maybe 12 o'clock, depending if there's another auction that day. The auction would go on. During the course of that auction, the bidders, meaning the, the banks that are bidding, can bid as many times as they want. And during the last two minutes of the auction, if there is a winner that is bidding that lowers the interest rate, the auction will get extended by two minutes. So we've certainly had many times where the auction's been extended several times. So every time that happens, it just saves a little bit more and a little bit more money for the district. Given, you know, the structure and size and term, you know, you guys have always been very well received in the market. So from an observation standpoint, we traditionally have had, you know, of course, I watch the auction, members of my firm, you know, Anne or whoever can join in as an observer and, and watch it. You know, I, you know, we don't normally have members of the public doing it. But certainly, you know, the board members, you know, if they're interested in going into Anne's office or whatever, I think we could probably, you know, work that out if that's something you want to do. But you know, I would say it's, it's exciting as bonds can be, whatever that means. But, you know, we, we do, we do enjoy, usually the auctions are, you know, are quite, you know, fun to watch, at least toward the backend when there's a number of underwriters bidding. They don't know what they're seeing. They just know that they're either winning or losing. And, you know, depending on, you know, the, the day itself and, and the, the time, you know, we could, we can have a number of bids that occur and, and, you know, it's, it's fun to watch. So that's, that's the back, that's the background, how it works. And then once it's all done, you know, my firm and I work through the numbers, compare everything and get ready for finalizing the numbers to make sure we, we follow the bids and, and Peter's parameters that he, we've established in the, in resolution. So I hope that answered your question. But, you know, Anne does have access usually, and she does watch it. So, you know, we can probably work something out if necessary.
Well, depending upon how the Eagles play over the next two weeks, I might show up in Anne's office because that would be more.
Yeah, that, it might be the most fun thing you'll watch, I think, I guess. I'm a Giants fan, so I can't say much.
You're done.
I'm a second to that.
I wonder, for the benefit of those who might be joining the meeting and hearing about this for the first time, could we just review the, the new money, correct me if I'm wrong, is about 3.6 million? Could we just review what projects we've identified that we would be spending that money on?
I was hoping Anne can jump in on that one.
I can. One of the larger projects is the, at the junior high, unit ventilator replacement and and control, converting pneumatic controls to DDC controls. The senior high, we have to replace a cooling tower. Going back to the junior high, that's about 1.9 million, senior high cooling tower about 240,000. And at the senior high and junior high, we also need some sidewalk and paving replacement at about 260,000. Lorraine Elementary, we're on cycle to replace some parts of the boiler plant, burners and pumps. At Reifton, we have a roof restoration project for 740,000. And at the junior high, as part of our long range capital plan, replacing some auditorium seating about 330,000. And again, these projects are in schedule to take place over the next three years. And the total is about 3.65 million.
Thank you very much, Anne.
You're welcome.
I think, I mean, I think from my perspective, I think we've hit all the high notes. I know Peter's given his information. So unless there's any other questions, let us know.
Okay, well, Peter and Jamie, thanks, you know, so much for working with Anne and providing the presentations. You've been to our, you know, you know, our various committees associated with this. You know, you've presented this to the workshop and the board meeting has been very consistent. And I think it's becoming more and more understandable. Every time we have a chance to hear you speak, we really appreciate your very thorough work. So thanks, gentlemen. Have a nice night.
You too, thank you guys and ladies.
Okay, we're going to move on in our agenda to public comments. And a reminder that this is an opportunity for our members of the community to make comments to the board, whether it's an item on the agenda or whether it's something that maybe is relevant or applicable to other aspects of school operation. We ask that those who submit comments try to limit their comment to about, about four minutes and speak on a single subject and have an opportunity to make those comments to the board. So I'm going to turn the conversation over to Patrick Winters. And Dr. Winters, if you could take a look and see what we've received so far in terms of public comment and take us through the process.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. We have received 19 public comments thus far. And so I will start with the first one and we'll go through them systematically. And where there are questions, members of the administrative team can address those questions as needed. So the first question is from Kerry McCarty. Kerry lives at 3902 Penn's Drive. My name is Kerry McCarty and I live at 3902 Penn's Drive. I woke up this morning and went on Facebook only to see a post that really concerns me. For the past eight years, possibly more, the school district has been trying to build a state of the art garage for our buses. While I understand that, while I understand that the buses may need a bigger space or a better garage, I do not understand the need for a $4.2 million project. I know my checkbook right now during this pandemic will not allow for any surprises. And so far, my hot water heater broke, air conditioner needed repair. I need a new roof, along with everyday maintenance of owning a home. My husband and I didn't buy a home in this township just so we could be taxed for everything your board wants to approve just because you can. While you may have an open checkbook, I don't. And my husband passed away four years ago, so I'm now doing this alone. In eight years, you could have done fun, entertaining, affordable fundraisers and raised some of the money, if not all of the money to build that garage. Think about that for a second. You've had 416 Saturdays and Sundays that you could have had a fundraiser such as spaghetti dinners, purse bingo. I know for a fact that St. Catherine's of Siena holds two a year and the one they hold in the fall, they raise over $20,000. Or what about a craft fair? I've been asking the schools to allow me to have a craft fair like Daniel Boone holds every year and most likely brings in around $10,000 if not more. But Exeter doesn't want to look at building, at building the community. They want, they just say we need, and then they take. If you would like more fundraising ideas, I would be more than happy to share them with you. If you would have heard me eight years ago, you would have had that money by now. But knowing and seeing what this board does, the money would have most likely been used for something else. Personally, I feel if you gave all an inch and worked with the community versus just telling us what you were going to do, you would be in better standings with the community. 90 people were just laid off from our district. I know many of them and a lot of them live in the Exeter district. Do you think they can afford the tax increase right now? I would have to say most likely no. A concerned member of Exeter School District, Kerry McCarty.
Can I just kind of respond to that kind of very briefly? And I don't really want to say too much other than that. You know, one of the things that we recognize about the current proposal right now and what's on the agenda is not necessarily an approval for a new transportation center. You know, the item on the agenda is a motion to move the, move the proposed project along in the process whereby we would be requesting the Exeter Township zoning hearing board to reconsider a variance for a construction at the Watten Creek Center. You know, that's been something that we've, we've tried to do in consideration of what our options, you know, really are. We look at the current facility as it stands. Our board, as well as all boards previous to us, have been very reluctant to put any dollars into the existing transportation building. And as a result, it's in very serious decline in terms of its condition. But anyway, the, the, the real nature of the meeting tonight and the purpose is to kind of determine whether or not the board is, is willing to kind of approve the process, at least moving forward, to determine whether or not that's an option for us to, to, to build on that, on the, on the site in a Watten. And then we'll depend upon a positive outcome, you know, if that's approved by the board, a positive outcome. Which is certainly no guarantee, you know, from the zoning hearing board.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. The next comment is from Nicole Henry. Nicole lives at 4189 Hunter's Run Boulevard. I am writing to urge you to move the school bus depot to former Promenade Shopping Center. The township already owns the property and there is plenty of space. If you continue to spend money so frivolously, you will continue to drive families out of Exeter. Thank you, Nicole Henry.
I'm just into the comment on that. I know that that's been, you know, a kind of a question that's been explored before. And I don't think the township has any interest in relinquishing that property. They have, I think, their own plans for the Promenade Shopping Center and use, you know, for virtually all the space that's available there. Certainly building a, you know, a transportation facility or having one available requires a good amount of space and that's just not, would be available, that would not be available to us, you know, through that, that particular project.
Dave, can I just add quick, just, just to reinforce your point, but that's something that several of the board members have personally raised with members of the Board of Supervisors. And I don't know if they've had a public discussion about what they want to do with the Promenade, but the plans that their administration had drawn up did not accommodate any additional space that the district could utilize. So it's something that we have discussed with them directly.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next comment and question comes from Mike Moore. Mike lives at 217 Wilson Avenue. Is there a plan in place for the school district to pay for a portion of the internet that families pay? If my child was registered in a cyber school, the cyber school will send money for the internet. Since my child is currently in a cyber school through the school district, through the school district, the district, should the school district pay for a portion of our internet fees? Dr. Hamburger, I'd be happy to address this question. So first of all, I very much appreciate Mr. Moore, you submitting this question. It's certainly a very good question. I think first and foremost, what I'd like to say is that as a district, we never want internet or inability to get internet service to be a barrier to a child learning. And so for any of our families, if there are situations where they, they don't have internet at their home, either because they can't afford it or other reasons, please know that in the district we have hotspots that we can make available through our education foundation and other community members. We've been able to work out an agreement with Service Electric, who is offering internet for free for new clients for the first three months. So we never want that to be a barrier. The other thing I will mention is that we, we don't view what we're doing right now as a cyber school. We view as taking our high quality, top notch curriculum that we have in the district and being able to present it and make it accessible in a virtual setting for our families using the talents of our teachers. So again, thank you for that comment and question. The next comment is from Jennifer Nolton. Jennifer is a parent of an, at a Watten Creek Elementary School. We do not have an address. It says, hello, I know there is an upcoming meeting for the school board on Tuesday. I just wanted to write a quick note in support of the online learning, since I'm sure you'll hear the negative comments too. I appreciate the school board making the right call for the safety of our students, teachers and staff. Yes, it's different, but no, it's not that bad. Our teachers have finally started getting the children into a groove and it's going much better. We ironed out all the online issues at first and now it's running smoothly. My daughter's in the first grade and her teacher is very interactive with them. I feel safer knowing she's home and all children are home safe too. Also keeping others safe in our community too. No one has the right answer, but I do know to sacrifice a little one over the next few, to sacrifice a little over the next few months is nothing in comparison to the worst case scenario with COVID and death. Once again, thank you for being strong enough to make the right, safe decision for now. Best regards, a parent at a Watten Creek Elementary. Jennifer, thank you so much for that comment and thank you for your support. We, we continue to work very hard to put the best virtual programming out there we can and, and having support from the community means a great deal. Our next comment is from Dana Allman. Dana lives at 4 Antietam Drive, Birdsborough. And says, hi, I see my kindergartner struggling. He cannot stare at an iPad from nine to three every day. Three hours live and three hours independently learning. I'd rather him be in the classroom setting, learning that, learning than at home. I'm aware of the health scare and we're willing to risk. I think his social emotional learning is suffering. Please consider reopening school, even if it's hybrid. He misses social engagement. Thank you, the Allmans. Dr. Minor, would you like me to address that or would you like to? So first of all, Dana, thanks so much for the comment. Again, we have, we very much appreciate hearing from parents. And we know that what we're doing online continues to be a work in progress for us. I can tell you that many of the things that you've mentioned in terms of the schedule, in terms of the social emotional learning, in terms of the interaction, as we think about our plans moving forward, regardless of what they might be for quarter two, we are going to take those things into account. And if there are ways to make adjustments accordingly that don't dramatically impact and negatively affect families, we're certainly going to take a look at that. The next comment comes from Kim Reed, who lives at 121 West 46th Street. And Kim has to say, virtual school is not working well for our family. Both of my elementary age boys have cried over technology learning issues already and school hasn't even been in session a month. Some teachers are also poor with their communication and it is last minute. They also don't have parents home to help them since we are both essential and on the front line. So they are with a sitter who has other children as well. And these last minute changes leave children out when they don't have whatever supplies, et cetera, is needed because they are not at home. I surely hope the board is considering opening the schools for in-person learning after these nine weeks. If other districts daycares in Berks County can do it, there's no reason Exeter cannot. I feel parents should be taken into consideration and allowed to make the decision if they would like their children to be back in person. Thank you. Somewhat similar to the last comment, Kim, thank you so much for your comment as well. I would say first and foremost, we, we will always look at and consider what's in the best interest of our students from a safety standpoint and from a learning standpoint and always make a decision with those in mind. We are paying attention to the data that is out there. We're paying attention to what other districts are doing. And ultimately, we certainly want to be at a place at some point this year where we can have students back in the building in some form. But, you know, as Dr. Minor often says, every day is a new day, information is constantly changing. And we will continue to look at that information and continue to make sure that we're making the best decision. I would certainly encourage you, if you're having any challenges with communication, please don't hesitate to reach out to the principal at the respective building or the virtual administrator that supports those content and grade levels for that additional support. That's one of the reasons that we put that into place. And I certainly hope you're able to take advantage of that support that is there. The next comment is from Christopher Jordan. Chris lives at 42 Glen Ole Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to submit a public comment. I hope to start doing it in person very soon. Please get our kids and teachers back in school for in-person education. The teachers are doing a fantastic job, but the current format is not the best way for our students to learn. The decision to take away our choice of in-person schooling should have never been made. This administration needs to stop saying we can't and start saying we can and we will. We also need more transparency on the plan to move forward. Has the administration submitted their reopening plan to the school board? Is Exeter prepared to open for in-person instruction at the end of October or sooner? Does Exeter have the necessary personal protection equipment, cleaning supplies and sanitizing items to open? Has the district started installing sanitizing stations for teachers and students? Are Jackson Wald and Lorraine even ready to open for in-person instruction? This administration needs to continue to move forward with a plan to open the schools for in-person education. School board, please mandate that the administration develop and implement a plan to get our students and teachers back in the classroom for in-person instruction as soon as possible. If you don't have it already, the plan should be in your hands by Friday, September 18th, 2020 or sooner. Mr. Jordan, thank you for your comment. I know there are a number of questions that are embedded in there. I will, I will do my best to address them for you. I think first of all, just to circle back to something that Dr. Minor has mentioned, we had a reopening plan that was developed and ready for the beginning of the school year. And so if we are able to bring students back at some point this year, we have that plan and we'll be able to make the necessary adjustments to it. When the decision is made in terms of what is going to happen for quarter two, if it is different, that plan will definitely be shared with the board for their review, much like we did with our plan at the beginning of the school year. As I said with the previous question, we, we absolutely want to be in a position where we can bring students back at some point in some fashion. We just want to continue to monitor the situation and monitor the data to make sure that that ultimate decision is in the best interest of our students and our families. We do have the necessary personal protection equipment, cleaning supplies, sanitizing items. Our safety grant that we received money for this year, we're using to purchase those items. So anything that we would need that hasn't been ordered yet, we would have whenever that time would come. And the buildings would definitely be ready to open at that point in time. And, and, you know, I know the projects that are happening at Jackson Wald and Lorraine right now are very, very close to completion. So thank you for your questions. Very much appreciate that. And, you know, again, as we've said, our, our hope is certainly to be able to have students back in the building at some point this year. We're just going to wait for the right time to do that.
Dr. Winters, I just would like to add that the, the projects at Lorraine and Jackson Wald had no bearing on our decision to be virtual for the first nine weeks, nor did they have any impact on our decision to return back to brick and mortar, whatever we believe it's safe to do so.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. The next comment, there's actually two comments from Kerry McCarty, 3902 Penn's Drive, both related to online learning. So I'll read them both back to back. The first one says, when I see or hear updates from the district that say virtual, virtual learning is going great, it honestly makes me cringe. It's not going great. These kids have too much downtime. Time that if they were in the classroom, they wouldn't have. Last week, one of the students in my care had an hour and a half break because they were told to watch a video and then they could go to a break. It was then lunch and recess. Let that sink in, one and a half hours of no learning, only after watching a less than five. It was then lunch and recess. Let that sink in. One and a half hours of no learning, only after watching a less than five minute video. Today it happened again with my daughter. She was finished with her work at 10:45 and was told to go to break and she didn't have to return until after lunch and recess. What could they possibly be learning? Then I hear through the grapevine that Jackson Wald and Lorraine are and have been under construction since June. Is this the real reason us parents who wanted their children to go back to school in person are now going virtually? Frustrated mom. And then jumping down to the other comment from Ms. McCarty as well. I do not know how this school district is saying things are going smoothly. You are not in our homes to make that assumption. Thirty minute breaks is not learning. Today, for example, my daughter went online at eight AM like she does every day. She finished her math work and because the teacher said you may break when you were finished with your math work, you, you may break. I could not get her to sign into Epic or have her work on other work to fill the 30 minute downtime. Yes, I said 30 minutes. She was finished with classes at 10:30 AM and didn't have to return until after lunch and recess, which was 12. This is an hour and a half downtime. I, as the only provider in my home, still have to work full time. Thankfully I make my own schedule, but working until all hours of the night makes for an exhausting day. Not to mention the lack of communication from the teachers to the parents, not to the students, to the parents. Today, my daughter needed a pound of spaghetti to create a masterpiece. First, we do not play with food unless it is going to be eaten such as smores. Second, I didn't have a pound of spaghetti because we had it for dinner the other day. Not to mention the children who I care for needed six cans of food, seven towels, a large Ziploc bag, construction paper, et cetera. With no communication to the parents in advance, this makes things incredibly hard on the kid and the person who is overseeing their academics. This causes a lot of stress on the parents as well, because they feel bad that they didn't know beforehand. Basically, all I'm saying is that there is not enough communication and way too much downtime. Ms. McCarty, thank you so much for your comments. Very much appreciate you sharing those concerns that you have. It's very helpful for us at the administrative level to hear those concerns. I will circle back very quickly, just for something that Dr. Minor mentioned that you addressed in your first comment. Jackson Wald and Lorraine and what was happening construction wise did not have any bearing on the decision to go virtual to start the school year. That, that's an independent item. And you know, if we absolutely felt confident that being back in person or in some form needed to occur in August, first day of school, then those buildings would have absolutely, we would have ensured that we were ready to go and we would have been ready to go. But the fact that there's still work going on there did not have any bearing at all on the decision. I, I appreciate you mentioning about, you know, the time and the schedule and the communication piece. We have a virtual subgroup of parents that I meet with regularly that I'm getting feedback on. And we take those and we look at those things. And so I'm going to include that feedback in part of my processing and in part of the dialogue we have with our administration. So I appreciate that. And we will certainly look as we continue to move forward to, to make sure that what we are doing is always in the best interest of students. And as I said in the previous comment, I would, I would always encourage you, if there are ever concerns related to the instruction that your child is receiving, always feel free to reach out to the teacher directly, to reach out to the administrator in the building to help with support as needed. Our next comment comes from Jessica Jordan. She lives at 398 Constitution Avenue. She writes, I wrote to you when you decided to accept Dr. Minor's full virtual plan to express my frustration. I expressed how important it was for young children to be in the classroom with the teacher to get a hundred percent learning opportunity. I want to thank the teachers for all their hard work. They have done a great job, but this is not the best way for our students to learn. As I sit and watch my child learn virtually, I get more and more frustrated and lots of questions come to mind. Why are we putting athletics before education? How is it acceptable to be able to have football games where kids tackle one another? But we can't have our students social distance in our schools with masks on. Why are we allowing BCIU in our building for support, but our students can't be in person? How were so many schools able to prepare for a school opening and we weren't? Was it because two of our elementary schools weren't ready? Do we have a plan for reopening by the end of the marking period? If yes, when will we get a definite answer? Do we have the safety items, equipment needed for a reopening? If not, why? You had since last spring to get a plan together for students to return safely for in-person instruction. How is it possible with a staff as large as Exeter not be able to put a plan together? This is not fair to our students and I don't pay taxes for virtual learning. I stress that our administration have a plan in place by the end of the month, if not already for in-person learning. Jessica, thank you for your comments. I, I want to address several of the questions that, that you put into the comments. Number one, I think first and foremost, when, when we made the decision to go fully virtual for the first quarter, that was a very detailed, well thought out, well calculated plan. You know, we, you know, we did not base that decision based upon construction work that was going in the district. You know, based upon what other schools were doing. We made that decision based upon thinking about the health and safety of all the children, all of our staff. And what was the best decision at that point in time with the information that we had? And we believed at that time and still believe that going virtual was the correct decision at that point in time. I absolutely agree with you. Our teachers were doing an amazing job. And we are very, very proud of everything all of our staff members are doing to make this happen. As Dr. Minor has said previously, and as I would echo, all of us on the administrative team from the superintendent on down, see the benefit in having kids in the building. Whether it's in a hybrid format or hopefully at some point in time, a full in-person format. We just want to make sure that when that time comes, that it's right and makes sense for the overall health and safety and wellbeing for all of our students and all of our staff members. And when that time is right, you can absolutely be certain that we will have a very well articulated plan like we had when we rolled out our virtual plan for quarter one. It will be shared. The board will view it. The community will have the benefit to hear about it, much like we did at a curriculum committee meeting for virtual. You know, so that, that will be there. We will absolutely make sure that if additional safety equipments needed, we'll purchase it. We have grant money set aside to be able to do that. The BCIU piece relates directly to childcare that we are able to offer for families that might need to take advantage of that. And the athletics piece and the education piece are, are independent in terms of the respect that they are governed by different guidelines. There are different things that we have to look at with regard to both of those things. And we're handling them both, you know, individually according to those guidelines. Dr. Minor, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Winters. In terms of the BCIU, that's a question that comes up frequently. The BCIU childcare, as you mentioned, is governed by DHS. But the reason that we felt confident that BCIU childcare could run when we didn't feel that it was run, safe to run schools, and we continue to feel that way, is that when our schools are open, we have literally hundreds of students. The BCIU childcare program has fewer than 24 in a building that's designed to house hundreds of students. So the opportunity to social distance and, and maintain safety protocols is obviously far higher with us. You know, only really a handful of students versus an entire building. As far as the issue of athletics, again, similarly, it's a much smaller number of students. It's a completely voluntary activity. Athletics aren't mandated like school is additionally. If we do need to close athletics, suddenly for any reason, there's no plan B that we need to have. There's no virtual athletics that we need to prepare for. And largely up to this point, you know, athletics have primarily been happening outside. So there's, there are many, many different factors in athletics versus running a school that, you know, is, is full of hundreds of students. As far as why some districts have made different choices, you know, we do have local patrol in Pennsylvania. We have 500 school districts. There are entire counties that are fully virtual. There are, you know, many districts within the county that have made that decision as well. And so each school district superintendent and school board needed to assess its own situation and its comfort level in terms of ensuring the safety and wellbeing of students as well as the educational continuity. I do think that one of the things that we've already seen play out in some districts that had a full opening or even a hybrid opening and will continue to see is that they have had to close and quarantine grade levels, classrooms, bus routes. You know, and, and entire school buildings, which can be incredibly disruptive to the educational process and to parents' childcare needs as well. And so we looked and considered all of those factors and will continue, continue to consider them. And I do want to emphasize that nobody, at least about me at Exeter, believes that virtual learning is preferable to brick and mortar learning. We all are committed to public education because we believe in what happens in the brick and mortar setting. However, we are in the middle of a pandemic and hard decisions have to be made and we have to balance safety with, like I said, educational quality and continuity. So we'll continue to make well-informed, carefully considered decisions. And we will continue to articulate thorough plans. We recognize that no matter what we do, it's, it's complicated and difficult for families. These are very unusual times, but we are committed to supporting families who are struggling. And so I would say to any parent whose child is having difficulty, please reach out to your classroom teacher, to your guidance counselor, to your principal. If you're having technology problems, please reach out to our IT department. We do want to do everything as a school district that we can to support the success of every child, whether it's in virtual learning or in the brick and mortar setting.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. The next comment, and there's, and there's also a couple of questions is from Joanna Stuck. Joanna lives at 36 Pickwick Place, Reading. It says, dear doctor, dear superintendent minor, now that Exeter has been virtual, what are the COVID statistics on the other school districts that are in a hybrid model or full session model? Our current county percentage is 5.1%. Is there a percentage or standard that we will return to in school learning? Or will the decision be made after the nine weeks?
I can answer that since it was addressed directly to me, Dr. Winters. In terms of the positivity rate, you know, the target rate was below 5%. So we continue to be over 5%. In terms of the statistics in individual schools, they are not, there's no public database by school that I'm aware of. I, I know that there is a research group that's collaborating to do one nationally, but within Pennsylvania, we haven't had access to reporting specifically. And there have been, as I mentioned, classroom, grade level and school bus route closures and quarantines already in Berks County as a result. And even within Exeter, you know, we had to pause athletics over our summer due to COVID positives. I think there was a second part to that question. Could you repeat it?
It just, it was, you know, our, our current county percentage is 5.1. Is there a percentage or standard that we will return to in school learning or will the decision be made after the nine weeks?
Yes, okay, thank you. So that's what I wanted to make sure I had clarity on. So we will not wait until the end of the nine weeks to make a decision or a recommendation to the school board about returning. We recognize that families need time to plan and assess. And so it's complicated because we want to give families that time to plan. Whether they want to have a virtual option or return to brick and mortar, what they will need for childcare. But at the same time, we don't want to make a call so early that the conditions in the county and the area change. And then we have to go back on that decision. So we're targeting early October to recommend to the board whether or not we would return to school in early November, or we would continue to proceed with virtual learning. So we are planning for that and we'll have those plans in place, but as to whether or not we'll make the decision, we'll look at that positivity rate is the metric, that 5.1 that you recommended. And I said earlier that the Department of Health and the DOH, the DOH and the Department of Education are looking at substantial moderate and low levels of transmission in communities to determine the proper instructional model. Right now, we continue in our county to be at the moderate level. And so according to the Department of Ed guidelines for the moderate level, no schools should be fully open. However, you know, obviously school districts have made that determination that they feel it's right within their own unique case. So just again, to restate, we won't wait until the end of the nine weeks to make that determination. We recognize that we need to allow families as well as staff members to plan in advance.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. The next questions come from Wendy Morzinski. She lives at 16 Culkin's Drive, Reading. What is Exeter doing to prepare for in-person education, whether hybrid or full in-person? Many schools are doing this successfully as we are in our fourth week. What is the reason why Exeter is not allowing school sports events to have spectators? It seems other districts have been able to come up with a plan and have verbalized it. Whereas there has been no communication to parents from Exeter except through coaches. As we finish up our fourth week of full virtual school, will there be a survey to parents on whether students are actually learning with the current model? I'm Wendy, I'm going to answer your first and third question, and then I'll ask Mr. Legath, our athletic director, who's on this meeting as well to, to address the second question. We, we are preparing, you know, right now for what an in-person or hybrid, you know, schedule would look like. We're meeting with our administrators. We're looking at scheduling models. We're consulting with all the different stakeholder groups within our buildings to get feedback and take a look at that. So yes, that process is happening. And we are taking the necessary steps to make sure the plans are ready. So that whatever decision we need to make, we're good to go there. And as to your question about a survey, yes, that is something that we are intending to do. Surveying our parents regarding the experience of students in the first quarter. So that we can use that data and feedback to inform our decisions. As you know, we did that over the summer in preparation for the plan that we were rolling out virtually to try to make sure that we accounted for some of the concerns that were articulated last spring. And we want to continue to have that community involvement. With your second question about school sports, Mr. Legath, I know you're on the call. If you could address that question, that would be great.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Winters. When, when it comes to school sports, we do have a plan. The BCI double A, Berks County Interscholastic Athletic Association, which governs our county, is approving a spectator plan on Thursday morning. After that plan is approved, there will be communication out to all families. To date, other than tennis and golf matches and games, we only have scrimmages so far. So tonight we did have a varsity boys soccer scrimmage that was streamed live on YouTube and it was very successful. But to answer your question, after Thursday's BCI double A meeting, there will be communication out to all families on spectators.
Thank you, Mr. Legath. I appreciate that. The next comment that we have is from Beth Ann Pasquale. She lives at 3529 Stoner Avenue in Reading. To whom it may concern, first, I want to express upon the board what an incredible job Exeter faculty is doing to make virtual school work for our children. Any technical kinks or scheduling adjustments aside, school has been organized and well-run. The colossal effort put forth by the staff is noted and deeply appreciated. That said, I hope any entertaining thoughts of return to in-person classes takes into consideration the children of Exeter Township, whom for whatever reason, their parents feel it unsafe to return in person. Right now, all children belong to homerooms, have designated teachers and classes they are just becoming accustomed to. If and when in-person classes begin, how will the students who opt for virtual be handled? Will they lose those teachers and classes they've become accustomed to? Will their education be upended and rerouted yet again? Is it possible for us to have a well-communicated idea of what the administration has in store for the school year beyond the first quarter? Numbers of COVID-19 cases in Berks County are not going down. Our family stuck with Exeter Township School District as opposed to a cyber charter because we want our son to continue to benefit from the positive student-teacher relationships he's had and hopefully will continue to have with Exeter faculty. There seems to be a lot of noise on social media calling for the return of in-person class as soon as possible. Please know that I don't think education or this situation is one size fits all. I'm speaking as a member of the community that is not looking to return prematurely and I have concern for those of us who feel the same way. Thank you for your time and efforts, Beth Ann Pasquale. Beth Ann, thank you so much for your comments. And I, you know, first of all, I will say, you know, we so appreciate the, you know, the kind remarks and the support that you're sharing regarding the job and efforts of our teachers and staff. And I echo that. They are doing an amazing job. And you know, it's one of the, one of the shining stars for Exeter Township School District are the amazing employees that we have. And they are all going above and beyond right now. So I certainly appreciate you mentioning that. And you are absolutely right. The number of COVID-19 cases in Berks County right now, you know, they're, they're not going down. Dr. Minor and I and the entire admin team, we, we're going to be continuing to monitor that situation very closely. We, we have had conversations around, regardless of what the model looks like in quarter two, if it's not virtual and it ends up being some type of hybrid model, there will continue to be a virtual model that will be available to families for students that want to continue to do that. there will continue to be a virtual model that will be available to families for students that want to continue to do that. You know, we want that online transition for our students and families that want to continue online, even if we end up going hybrid or in-person at some point in the district, we want that to be as seamless as possible. And, you know, we, you know, we understand that changes in routines and upending kids is not, you know, a good thing. And most importantly, we appreciate that you put your trust in us as a district for the education of your children and we want you to certainly remain in Exeter Township School District. So I appreciate the questions and, and yes, there will continue to be an online option. And we, we're going to be very thoughtful about the plan that we make moving forward. And just like we looked at all the data and we're very thoughtful and, you know, very calculated in a positive way about how we handled education to start the year, that will be the same approach throughout the rest of the year, making sure that student safety and well-being is our top priority. The next comment comes from Jen Campbell from 218 Harvey Avenue. Has there been any consideration for going back earlier than the beginning of the second quarter? Other school districts in the area are putting things in place to start hybrid as early as next week. Thank you for your time. Jen, thanks for your question. I think what, what's important to keep in mind with that is, you know, we, we recognize the importance of natural transitions. And when we think about all the learners across the K-12 spectrum, it could be very challenging potentially to change the schedule before the quarter is over and, you know, completely upend the routines that they might be developing. So if we would make any substantial change to our schedules either way, we would wait until the beginning of second quarter to do that. That's a natural transition point in the student year. And it's a point in time where a transition could be managed much more easily, both by students and by families.
Dr. Winters, I just want to follow up and say that we think that it's very important to keep our community informed and give them the time to plan. And so we did say very specifically that we would not return prior to the nine weeks. And so we do not intend to do anything different than that at this point. And the reason that nine weeks was selected, as you said, was due to the, the natural transition of the quarter. However, I do want to just emphasize that we're not just picking arbitrary dates and times. We are being planful and giving our families opportunities to know what they need to expect in terms of childcare and when they can expect to go back to school. So we are committed to the first nine weeks being fully virtual.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. Our next comment is from Lois Drumheller, 8 Golf View Lane. Exeter students have not been in a school building since mid-March. Although during this time, everyone associated with providing for the students' educational needs has been diligent in their efforts, without a doubt, our children are academically behind in what an in-school, non-COVID-19 school finish and start would have provided. For this reason, every district resource possible should be available to our students and our teachers for helping our students master the skills they may have missed and for providing remedial education where needed. Presently, our emphasis should be on returning our students to school and making sure that their needs are met. Now is not the time for the Exeter School Board to be undertaking expensive new projects, such as a $4.2 million bus garage. It was only a few years ago that this same issue was introduced. At that time, the project was rejected by the Exeter Township Zoning Board and an expensive lawsuit ensued. The lawsuit resulted in a loss for the Exeter School Board and taxpayers picked up the legal costs. What is different now than what was proposed previously? Have the zoning requirements changed or will this become another legal debacle? At this time, when so many of our taxpayers have lost jobs, including the 90 employees of the Exeter School District and so many other taxpayers live on a fixed income, it is imperative that Exeter does not take on further debt by pursuing projects that do not directly enhance student success. Now is the time to totally support in-classroom student achievement and not the time to proceed with a $4.2 million project resulting in a bus garage and increased taxes. Lois Drumheller. I think with, with regard to your comments about making sure we focus our resources completely around picking up the gaps that, that students may have, instruction that may have been lost last spring, those types of things. I don't think anybody on this call would disagree with that. The education of our students is a, is a top priority for all of us. And, you know, independent of any kind of capital projects that we would do, we would still continue to make the education of our students our top priority. And, you know, in terms of resources, in terms of making sure we're doing everything we can and, you know, those are, you know, that's, that's, that's a primary reason why we are using grant money to purchase Fanta's and Pennell Classroom, while we've already used grant money to purchase digital resources like First in Math and Star 360 and Reading Eggs, so that we have some resources that kids can use to continue to work on closing some of those gaps. Not sure if any board members want to address the, the transportation centerpiece of the comment or not.
Dr. Winters, I would just like to address and say that, you know, anytime a school district undertakes a capital project and, and school districts do that with, with great frequency at varying levels, you know, they, they make a point of, you know, ensuring that it doesn't disrupt the educational process. And regardless of whether or not the school board chooses to move forward with the transportation center, I can assure the entire community that we will not let it interfere with the quality of education that we deliver. And I think that that is just good school district management, that there are always facilities, projects that need to be undertaken and you compartmentalize those and you make sure that education and well-being of children come first. So regardless of what the board would decide to do, you know, I would commit as superintendent that it will have no negative impact on teaching and learning and the quality of education that we're doing in Exeter now, during the pandemic or any later time.
Thank you, Dr. Minor.
And I'll just pick up Patrick, if you don't mind on, you know, just a couple of comments about, you know, the, the reason why, you know, we're looking again at the transportation center as a, as a priority. You know, this is something that our boards have been trying to do since the 90s, actually, is to try to develop another option for our transportation center. The current location of the facility is problematic. The size of the current facility in terms of any potential for expansion is unsatisfactory and far too small. The, the condition of the building itself is rapidly deteriorating and is, is actually beyond the point that it should be in terms of things that should be replaced, such as fuel tanks and, and the roof. It's, it's in, it's in serious decay. And it's, it's a, it's a project that's been sort of like passed down for one reason or another. And the most recently, you know, the reason was because of a zoning hearing, hearing issue. What's different now is that, you know, we've had opportunities to speak, you know, with township supervisors and with the representative from the zoning office. And they've actually encouraged us to, to kind of come back to the table and re-articulate the request. Because I think, you know, when they have come and taken, and had a chance to take a look at the facility, they realize the state of deterioration. They realize how inadequate it is. Facility that was built 45 years ago and is no longer really able to meet our needs and our, and any potential for growth. So that's one of the reasons why we're bringing it back up again and, and to kind of piggyback on what Dr. Meyer said. You know, this is part of a capital project. And if this would go forward, you know, that sort of debt does not have serious impact upon, you know, the, the annual budget would not take away from the instructional programming for students. So I want to thank, you know, Mrs. Drumheller for her comments and as well, but assure her that, you know, this is something that has been thought through very carefully by Facilities Committee, by the Ad Hoc Transportation Committee and, and has been really been something that's been considered for several years. And it's, and, and because of the seriousness of the problems that we're having at the current facility, it's even more important that we do something soon rather, sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. The next comments and questions come from Matthew Clip. Matthew lives at 3803 Patton Street in St. Lawrence. Good evening. My name is Matt Clip and I have a five-year-old in the kindergarten program at Jacksonwald Elementary. Our children need face-to-face education. This is an important stage in their education that, in my opinion, can make or break how they feel about schooling. For instance, my five-year-old absolutely loves going to preschool but dreads having to get in front of an iPad every day. He is a very intelligent and high-energy boy that thrives on face-to-face interaction and loves to be challenged. This is something that simply cannot be possible with virtual learning. Despite the great efforts and attention of the teachers, virtual learning does not challenge or prepare them. As I watch other schools open successfully, sports being started back up successfully, I sit here and wonder, why can't my child go to school with extra safety protocols in place? If children can be on a soccer field, football field, et cetera, together, why can't they be in school together? For instance, my three-year-old daughter is enrolled in preschool three days per week and has no issues keeping her mask on and following additional safety protocols. Was Exeter Township School District ill-prepared? Did they not apply the proper resources to have this all in place? With the amount we pay in school taxes, I'd expect we should have the resources that our children can safely return to their classrooms for a proper education. Putting the kids in front of iPads and computers for five-plus hours a day is not an education. It's checking a box to say you're doing something. I have three closing questions for the members of the school board. Do you have a plan in place to open at the end of this marking period or sooner? If so, when will this plan be shared with the parents of the community? If not, why? Again, I appreciate the efforts of all the teachers trying to make virtual learning as productive as possible, but our teachers and their students need to be back in the classroom together.
I would, I'd like to take this.
Sure.
Thank you. First of all, the, the reason that we're learning virtually and continue to learn virtually is because the rates of transmission in our county have continued to climb over the summer and have maintained high. I was just got a notification about today's positivity counts in Berks County over the last 14 days. They're at 546. The original metric to open schools was 210 over the last 14 days. So those numbers are not at all in line with what we were advised in the summer or continue to be advised are appropriate for full in-person learning. We recognize that virtual is challenging. Again, I would reiterate, as I did previously, if your individual child is struggling, please reach out to your, your teacher, your guidance counselor. Let the school help and support your individual child in any way possible. But in terms of the lack of a plan or the inability or unwillingness to plan, there is, you know, plenty of evidence regarding our plans and the quality of the team's plan. In July, that evidence was available and continues to be available. Would like to see it in our health and safety plan as well as our athletic opening plan. Those are available on our website. Our virtual plan is available on our website. And again, you can see the, the care and attention that went into the planning of that document. We will continue to do so whenever we return to brick and mortar. We will have thoroughly articulated plans that we'll provide to the school board prior, prior to making a recommendation to reopen and those will be publicly available on our website. We do believe it's important to be transparent about both our safety and our instructional plans. And we continue to intend to do so regardless of the transitions that we need to make through full virtual, a hybrid model or a full reopening. So I want to assure the community that we take planning and preparation extremely seriously and our intention has been and continues to be to be entirely transparent about those plans. And we do recognize that there are challenges and kindergartners certainly present a challenge. They are youngest learners and I, and I would agree with the, the comment that it's a critical time and we recognize that, you know, primary learning is a critical time. We recognize that for our seniors, it's a critical time and all of us want nothing more than to be back in a brick and mortar setting. But we want to make sure that when we do it, we are doing it in a way that ensures to the best of our ability. And we recognize that it's not going to be perfect and that we are in a pandemic, but to the best of our ability, the safety and well-being of our students as well as the quality of the instruction. And we do need to pay attention to, although the guidance changes frequently, numbers like 546 when the opening metric was 210. So we will continue to do so.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. The next question comes from Kristy Jacoby. Kristy lives at 3 Elliott Drive in Reading. My specific, or my question is specific to when return to in-person instruction is offered. What will happen to virtual instruction? Will the virtual option still exist? Will the student's schedule remain the same with their current teachers? Will the instruction continue with the same schedule and setup via the Zoom platform? I thank you for your time, Kristy Jacoby. Kristy, thank you for your question. Just to kind of, you know, kind of reiterate and kind of share again, yes, if we end up with an in-person plan or a hybrid plan for quarter two, the virtual option will still be there. It will still exist. We're not eliminating that because we do recognize that we will still have families that will, you know, potentially want that. And we will, we will take a look at what we're doing virtually at that transition point of the second quarter. If there are some minor tweaks we can make to that virtual plan to better support and meet the needs of students, you know, we'll do that. But our goal will be to try to keep it as similar and keep the transition as seamless as we can using the tools that students are already familiar with and that parents are familiar with, Zoom, Schoology, et cetera. The next question comes from Rebecca Thomas. Rebecca lives at 419 Pennsylvania Avenue. Has there been any consideration for going back earlier than the beginning of the second quarter? I see other schools in the area are putting things in place as early as next week. It has been very difficult for my youngest son, who is in elementary school and is struggling very bad with the amount of time spent in front of the computer every day. Rebecca, thanks for that question and that concern. You know, we, we are, we're always paying attention to how things are going, what our student experiences look like. We're getting great feedback from our teachers and our, and our principals. We're maintaining second quarter as a good time to potentially, you know, make that, you know, transition, provided that, you know, the data and everything supports that, that kind of change, as was mentioned earlier. And then, Dr. Hamburger, our last question is from Stephanie Mosteller. Stephanie lives at 4498 Delmar Drive. And it says, "Good afternoon. Will there be any changes to policy for spectators at the school sporting events? The field locations are pretty open with plenty of options for social distancing, even just for parents. I'm really disappointed to not be able to watch my daughter. She's a cheerleader with no fans in the stands. Not sure who they'll be cheering to." And so I've once again asked Mr. Legath if there's anything he'd like to, to add there or Dr. Minor, anything you might like to add to that question.
If I can just say, this is the second time this question's come up. We had an athletics committee meeting last Thursday. I, I think the, the question out there right now is, we have a great girls tennis team, but the back and forth between the governor and the PIAA was even more interesting. You know, we need to make it, we, we need to just let our community know. Are we going to establish that what goes on in the stadium is our responsibility? What goes on outside the facility, particularly for Friday night, goes on outside the facility? I think we just, you know, people are Wilson, Conrad Weiser, Twin Valley, Wyamissing, a, a, a number of other schools have just decided that, hey, look, you know, we want you to mask, we want you to social distance, we're going to follow the governor's rules. We have to follow the governor's rules because the PCI double A will penalize our athletic teams for any participation postseason if we don't follow those rules. I think all our community wants to know at this point is if I can stand outside the stadium and watch on Friday night. And that's football, but, but also, you know, soccer or whatever. So I just think the board or the administration or somebody's got to give them some direction. And honestly, I would support that because I just don't want to fight with our community over this. They're smart. You know, if we, if we sign masks, if we do social distancing, people will figure it out.
Mr. Chapina, I would, you know, agree with your comments that it has been a lot of back and forth. It has changed sometimes day to day in terms of where things stand with the governor, where things stand with PIAA. And I appreciate, you know, your comments that we do have to abide by those regulations in our formalized settings like our stadium. And I do think that it behooves the district to post our property, to remind people who may visit and, you know, watch the games from outside of the fence or outside of the stadiums to maintain social distance and to wear masks and to behave in all of those ways that we know are best to mitigate the virus. I think that that, again, there are so many things here that are a delicate balance of engaging our community in our athletics, allowing parents to watch their children and making sure that we don't create environments in that, that ultimately lead us to not be able to open in a brick and mortar setting because we have increased community spread. And so I think your point is well-taken. We have a, you know, a terrific community that is very invested in Exeter. We have a, you know, a terrific community that is very invested in Exeter schools, and I think would abide by those social distancing, that social distancing signage as well as that masking signage, and really do their part to both enjoy our sports while staying with, in the governor's parameters from a legal standpoint within the facilities themselves, and practice mitigation efforts that will allow us, I'm sorry, my cat just jumped by me, but that will allow us to have sports and not create, not create further virus spread in our community.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. Dr. Hamburger, that, that concludes the, the comments we have for public comment.
Thanks, Dr. Winters, and thanks to all of, all the community members and parents who submitted comments to the board. We, we do appreciate hearing from you. We think it's even while some of these questions are very difficult, you know, the exchange and the opportunity to hear your perspective to kind of help us better understand your experience. If you're a parent, really, I think, gives us the kind of feedback we need to kind of structure, you know, the, the kind of programming that we need going forward. We're going to move into the agenda with item five on our agenda. It's minutes, and we have two sets of minutes. So it's recommended the school board approve the meeting minutes from the August special board voting meeting, the August board workshop, and the August eighteenth board voting meeting.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Or the motion carries? Next is treasurer's report. It's recommended the Board of School Directors approve the treasurer's report for August and payment requests as listed in the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Other school board actions. It's recommended the school to board, Board of School Directors approve the appointment of Brian Fike as Board Secretary, and also as our representative for the Berks County Tax Collection Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Board policies. Two, two, two sections on the agenda. We have four policies for first reading and seven policies for second reading. It's recommended the score, Board of School Directors approve the policies as listed in the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. So we're going to move to item nine on the agenda. It's business functions, and that's Mr. Aaron's, Mr. Aaron's.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following business functions items. One, bond refinancing and new capital project funds parameters resolution.
Mr. Aaron's, I need to do a roll call vote. After a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Aaron's.
Aye.
Mr. Fidler.
Aye.
Dr. Herring.
Aye.
Dr. Hamburger.
Aye.
Mr. Chapina.
Or I say aye, and I know that this is probably your last bond refunding as the business manager for the school district. And I would like to thank you for all your efforts in getting us to this point and the significant savings that have occurred over the last several years in bond funding. So thank you for that effort. It gets very complicated, but I appreciate that. I'm an aye.
Thank you. Dr. McLendon.
Aye.
Dr. Miller, excuse me, Mr. Miller.
I wish it was a doctor. Aye.
Mrs. Stratton. Mrs. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Stratton, was it a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion carries. Pardon me, yeah?
I, nine yeses.
So motion, motion carries unanimously, thank you. We're going to move on to item ten personnel, Mrs. Wilson.
Hey, I am going to break this a little bit. It is recommended that this Board of School Directors approves the following personnel items. Number one, a separation and release agreement with employee two zero two one zero five five with an irrevocable resignation date of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries, nine zero.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following person, personnel items, two, three, five, six, seven, and eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Who, and who gave the second? I'm sorry.
And did.
And gave the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following personnel item. Number four, appointments for extracurricular staff. A, guest teachers, A, C, and D, support staff, support staff substitutes, A.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following personnel items. Number four, appointments, guest teachers, B.
Second.
Any discussion?
Dr. Hamburger, I will be abstaining from this appointment as I have a pre-existing familial relationship with the candidate.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron's. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And abstentions?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Motion carries eight zero with one abstention.
That's everything, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mrs. Wilson. Student functions, Mrs. Stratton.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following student function items. One, two, three, four, and five.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries nine zero.
And there is also a report about non-resident senior, and then permission to attend school. And then there is also item number C. It says the district will be resuming in-person evaluations on an as-needed basis for students in need of psychoeducational and service assessments that cannot be conducted remotely following the protocols set forth in health and safety plan.
Thanks, Mrs. Stratton. And, and is there anything else that the administration wants to, will say about that as maybe Dawn Harris? Or someone else would like to, maybe just comment on that briefly?
I would, Dr. Hamburger, thank you. So I guess this item is a piece of positive news that I wanted to share with the board. If you recall, in the virtual plan that you approved, we indicated that we would be bringing students on campus on an as-needed basis to complete evaluations and assessments related to special education eligibility and gifted services eligibility. So I wanted to inform the board that that process is up and running, and we're following all of the most updated guidance from Pennsylvania Department of Health and CDC regarding safety protocols in that process. I would also say that it, you know, I've been here a little over two months, and I guess it doesn't take very long to become a proud Eagle. And I say that in relationship to the amount of collaboration that went into making this process be available for our students and our families. So I'll use this opportunity to sneak in a thank you to everyone who helped our People Services team get this up and running.
Thanks, Mrs. Harris. Okay, well, we'll move on to item twelve on the agenda, and we're moving into committee reports and athletic committee, Mr. Chapina.
Mr. Chapina said his internet is shaky right now.
Why don't we come back to Mr. Chapina when he comes back? And we're going to, we'll move to item thirteen. All right, Mr. Chapina, we'll come back to you when your internet is feeling better. We're going to move on to item thirteen, Business Functions Committee, Mr. Aaron's.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Just to quickly state that I will be scheduling a time to meet with Kim and with Brian or with our incoming business manager and the superintendent to try and get some more traction or handle on what the committee is going to be doing, especially in December and next year. But we're likely going to be having a Business Functions Committee in October to discuss the budget process regarding specifically the opt-out resolution for real estate tax mileage. There is, there was previous discussion that I've had, and I want to make sure that that's coming to the public forefront and to the committee so that we can really test to see if we want to do that again. So that would probably be coming up for consideration at November's meeting or even before then, but we're going to probably be talking about it in October. With that, and I'm going to try not to get bogged down on this. This evening is probably the last meeting that Mrs. Guidish will be joining us. So when I was a younger man, some years ago, and I started coming to board meetings, I think probably maybe before anybody else on here except for maybe Mike. Although I know Sharon served a stint before I started coming, so she, she got me too. I have always been impressed by a truly incredible person, which is Ann Guidish. She has been a role model for me in my professional career. When she speaks, people listen. She has served the district with distinction, with diligence, and ultimately, I think she's gained the trust of probably every person on this board, I would think, and many before that. I think, you know, while no one is irreplaceable, she's coming pretty close. And I just, I just wish you congratulations. I thank you for the model that you've provided and the diligence through which you've done it. And I'm sure I could find rosier things to say, but I'm trying really hard to keep it contained. So I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. You know, I, I appreciate the opportunity to serve the board, serve the community, serve the staff, and especially serve the students. I mean, it was always my goal to make sure that there was resources for the students. I mean, that was, that's what keeps me, kept me up at night, you know, making sure we can always provide. So, thank you.
Would now be a good time to have a little presentation for Ann. Like, in my mind, we would have like a little, a little blue cloth that I could unveil something for her. But since we're not in person, we'll have to see if Joe Calamita can help, help me by putting something on the screen. We just want to say, on behalf of the school board and in conjunction with the Exeter Community Education Foundation, we would like to virtually present you with this brick that has been installed at the high school in honor of you, Ann.
Very nice.
Thank you very much.
I'll have to go look for it.
Yep, it's right by the base. So that's right, I, I spent some time looking, and then I'm like, oh, it was right there. So, yep, right by the base of the eagle.
Thank you.
And, and, and I'd also like to reiterate, and then, and I think Hunter said it so well. You know, you've been a, a model administrator. I mean, we talk about administrators as being, you know, servant leaders, you know, people who put the organization ahead of, of just about everything and, and without ego, without, without pride, and with the, the full intent of doing whatever's best for the school district. And you have exemplified, exemplified that in spades. So I think, I, I think we all feel that way. We're all very appreciative, we're going to miss you. And, and thanks so much for your years and years of service here within the school district. Good luck, Anne.
You're here.
Thank you.
If there aren't any more comments, we can attempt to move, you know, back to the agenda, and we're at the curriculum programs, Curriculum Committee section of the agenda. Item fourteen, and that's Dr. McLendon, Dr. McLendon.
It's recommended that the Board of Directors approves the following curriculum items. One, the Board of Directors adopt the Pennsylvania Department of Education Electronic Signature Resolution that authorizes and directs Dr. Minor to electronically sign any and all contracts, agreements, grants, and/or licenses with the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And, and two, this was not on the agenda last week, but Dr. Minor did, we talked about it, and Dr. Minor did give a, you know, review of what it was, but I'll read the, I'll read it. Board of School Directors approve the purchase. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of Fontis and Pennell Classroom guided and shared reading libraries for grades K through four in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand. The purchase will be funded through the elementary and secondary school emergency relief grant as well as the ready-to-learn grant. And the resolution for number one is attached, and the invoice for all of the different schools is also attached in the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and the second thing there is, you will find the enrollment, a report for August is attached. See, there's recognition, Exeter Township School District proudly recognizes Mrs. Diana Bogus, a Watten Creek Elementary School Health and PE teacher, and K through six Health and PE Department Chair on receiving the twenty twenty Society of Health and Physical Educators of Pennsylvania, she, Pennsylvania Elementary Physical Education Teacher of the Year Award. So congratulations, Mrs. Bogus. That is a well-deserved award, we're proud of you. Okay, and then we have a, Exeter Township School District sincerely accepts, thanks, and appreciates a monetary donation in the amount of five hundred dollars from Dr. Elizabeth. in the amount of $500 from Dr. Elizabeth Weber, former Director of Humans, for Township School District. The money will go towards the purchase of books for students to read in their home. Thank you so much, Dr. Weber. That's a wonderful gift to get books in the hands of students. So we really appreciate that donation. And the other, so just a little update, a little report on the curriculum committee meeting. We met on September 8th, virtual meeting. At that meeting, Dr. Winters gave an update on virtual learning. He reported that we're off to a good start. Attendance in the, is in the mid to high 90s for all schools. I'd like to just say what they are. They're in our minutes, but I think they're really good, especially for the first couple of weeks. The rain attendance was 97%. Jackson Wall, 96. Watten Creek, 98%. Ripton, 95. Junior High, 99% and the Senior High, 94%. So Dr. Winters always also said he's received a lot of positive feedback and also constructive feedback. Dr. Winters, I know you talked a lot about the virtual program and what we're doing. Was there anything else that you wanted to add? I know you answered with the parent, with the community questions, you did answer a lot, but was there anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, no, I mean, just to, just to kind of echo what you said, Dr. McLendon, that, you know, things have been going well, but I think what's been a real positive is we've had so many parents that have wanted to partner with us and provide a lot of outstanding constructive feedback. We meet regularly with the virtual, virtual learning advisory parents subgroup that continues to give us really, really good information that, that helps inform decisions that we make and, and also helps us in terms of next steps. So it's, it's really been a great way to partner with the community to try to make this virtual learning experience as beneficial as we can for students.
Okay, and I just want, you know, on a personal note, my grandson started kindergarten and, you know, he comes here after he's done because he has a morning session. But the other day, he, well, not just the other day, but he always refers to it as I was at school. So, you know, that made me feel good that he doesn't view it as I'm just on my iPad. He feels like he's at school and his teacher is really wonderful, Mrs. Young. She's, she's extraordinary and she's really making it a positive experience, you know, for her students. So just wanted to throw that in there. The rest, the majority of the meeting was a presentation by Dr. Minor on the Fontis and Pennell Classroom Program, which she summarized that and we actually just voted on that a few minutes ago. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 13th. I know, right now it's still going to be virtual or are we gonna make some decisions about that, Dr. Winters? I know there was some talk about, it's at five o'clock and it's virtual so far. Are we staying with that time for October?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And virtual?
Yes.
Okay, so that will be our next meeting. And that is the curriculum report.
Dr. Hamburger, I have a question. Is there supposed to be an enrollment report attachment on the agenda? Because I don't see one.
I believe there is.
It's there. I,
Is there? Oh, because I looked and I don't see it.
It's probably,
There.
Administrative conference.
It's under B. Do you see B, August 30th?
Yeah, I see it. I just don't see the attachment. It's okay. It's probably my computer.
Okay.
Thank you.
I thought it was there. It's there because I had opened it earlier.
Yeah. Okay. And so we're going to move to the next item on the agenda. It's item 15, Facilities Committee, Mr. Fiddler.
Sorry, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following Facilities Committee items. I think it would be best to take these individually. The will, I'll just finish reading the first one. Authorize district administration to work with AM Architects Stackhouse Bensinger and District Solicitor who seek township variances required for a transportation center project at the Watten Creek site.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I, I had a question. I'm doing a lot of thinking about this and listening to our constituents, listening to friends, taxpayers, neighbors. And since I'm still learning the parliamentary procedure, I'm wondering if there, is it possible to have another question before the board or is this, are we limited to this question?
Alice is on the line, I think, too.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure for what, what you mean, John. Go ahead.
Just thinking out loud, what if we were to recreate or rewrite this as a, a tabling motion? That we, that we table it to some future date and take a vote on that.
You can do that.
Yeah, I mean, usually, you know, when I look at Robert's rules relative to tabling, tabling is oftentimes done, you know, to, you know, almost within the meeting itself. It sounds more like we're postponing to a, either postponing indefinitely or postponing to a specific date or after a specific action for the board. Are you, are you implying, John, that we need more information in order to make this decision?
I, I think I, I speak for myself. Board members speak for them, for themselves. I would just like some more time to gather more information, study the issue to make, to make certain that, that at least I can make the most informed decision I can make.
And I'll add to that. I feel the same way. I'm struggling and, you know, an hour, well, at this point now, two hours ago, I was thinking to myself, I don't know how I'm going to vote. I see the need for this. I know that there is a need. There is no doubt in my mind that something needs to be done. And I'm not interested in pushing this any farther than what's already been pushed. I feel like the district, we've wasted so much time and money. You know, everyone's complaining about how much money this costs us. We've already lost so much money pushing it down the road. And if we do that again, we're just adding to the problem. But I also don't feel like this is a good time to be doing it. I also don't feel like all of the board members have all the information. And I'm 100% certain the public does not, just looking at the crazy comments on Facebook. One of our comments today was that we're building a state of an art, state of the art garage. That is not true. If you look at the plans, around half of the money is for excavating. It's not for the building. It's a very plain Jane building. It's, it's nothing fancy. So that's not true. And the public seems to have this perception and I feel like as a board, we need to do better communicating to them. And, and I understand that some of it is that they're not getting the right information because they're going to the wrong source to get the information. But I would like us to do a better job of communicating with them and why we're building this, you know, what we've done, because I spoke to Dave several times in the past few weeks about this and he had the most amazing valid points. He really does. He's, he's very knowledgeable on this. And I want the community to know everything that he knows so that they can not look at this in such a negative light, but look at this as a great thing that we're doing. You know, one of the things that we had mentioned was this project is a little over $4 million. We just talked tonight about spending $3.65 million on improvements to our schools. The community doesn't bat an eye at that stuff, but now we're looking at the same amount of money approximately and all of a sudden, we're all the devil. So I feel like I'm not ready to make a $4 million decision tonight, but I also don't feel like I'm ready to say no to this. So I'm, I'm struggling with this.
Can I, can I just jump in there quick, Michelle? Because I think, you know, I think your, your feelings probably speak for a few others on the board. But the real context of this decision is to seek regulatory relief. And, and that's a simplified way of saying it because the, the zoning hearing board isn't necessarily a regulatory agency. But this plan that we have does not make much sense if the zoning hearing board will not grant us the ability to construct anything on that land. And I think that it's really prudent for us to try and seek that grant ahead of time, because that in effect would make much of this conversation null and void if they did not. And I think that we've gotten some indication that they could. So it increases the importance, I think, that we really have that step clarified. Beyond that, I, I think the timeline that our architects have laid out at this point does not suggest that we would look to borrow any money, probably even in this school year. So it's not like we are borrowing money for a project that's tentative in the middle of this pandemic and this crisis. But I think we also need to be clear that we need to keep this project moving forward. If we're going to delay on this project, then we should immediately make sure that we're providing for the current facility with a new roof. It's unacceptable that we're rolling the dice year after year with the possibility that that roof could come on and collapse overnight. And our guys that go into the office or go into the current facility are coming and there's permanent damage that they can't work in that facility. And that will permanently, or not permanently, that will extremely decrease the productivity that we have in our operation that we've heard in two separate reports separated by time, that our transportation operation is top notch and it's saving us money. We need to make sure that we're continuing that both for the near term and the long term. And I really think that this is the most direct way for us to find resolution on this issue. There are plenty of other good suggestions, trying to do something at the current site. The problem is, is that there are reasons that we're not going to, I think, end up there. Because that site is too small. There are code issues that if we were to do new construction there, we would not be. And it's not guaranteed that the township would give us regulatory relief on those. That site is currently not able to accommodate our fleet in an appropriate way. We don't have any type of security fencing that we'd like to have to protect the assets of the community that are in those buses. We're also unable to support our propane operation in a sustainable way that the entire board, we voted to support us moving towards because of the cost efficiency that they would provide in the long term. So I really think that we have a limited scope question here. Are we going to move this project one step forward? Because we need to get that information about whether or not we're going to be given that zoning relief. And I think if we focus our decision on that this evening, we really have all the information we need. We know what the scope of the project is. We know the problems that we have associated with the zoning ordinance. We know the button that we need to go to to get resolution around that. So I think it is a prudent decision for us to move forward with doing so tonight. The actual construction cost of that building, the materials, I believe the labor is under a million dollars. And we need to work hard at seeing if we can realize savings in some of those earthmoving expenses, especially around the addition of the new parking lot along the side of the building towards, I'm blanking on the street name, but towards the hill there. I think we can really look to try and realize some savings with figuring out a way to use some of the current space that's already being used elsewhere on Watten's property. And I really think that we need to focus our efforts there to try and realize some of the savings. But I think, you know, ultimately, it's going to come down to the fact that we have a dilapidated facility on a property that in the future is not going to be sustainably used for a new facility and we can only put Band-Aids on something and it's basically putting lipstick on a pig. You know, I, I think that this, this decision has been very challenging for a lot of boards and the community has not understood it. Because I don't think the community wants to see us spending $4 million on something that they don't see as a necessity. I think the reality is, is that it is a necessity. And it's unfortunate that we have to go against what many in the community are verbalizing and vocalizing. But our responsibility is to provide for the community and for the students. And we can't do that without a transportation fleet that works well. So that's why I'm going to be supporting this. I will not be in support of tabling. And if we do successfully table, I'm going to make a motion that we immediately get pricing to fix the roof at our current facility.
I just, I want to say that I, last week said I was not in support of moving forward with the variance. And I am sticking with that this week. I'm not in support of moving forward with the variance. Mike asked a question last week about a Plan B and I thought it was a great question. We should have a Plan B. And that's, I know we have to do something about our current facility. But I don't think building a brand new facility is the way that we need to go right now.
Yeah, I think I find what's troubling here is that we are expecting to get zoning relief for a Watten, but we, but it was just stated that we wouldn't get zoning relief for the facility that we're at. So I, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of an interesting conundrum. We expect zoning to disregard their variances in one respect, but not disregard their variances in another. So, you know, I find that a kind of interesting conundrum, but I, I think, you know, more than that is we are going into battle on this with the exact same plan that we went into battle four years ago. There is no Plan B. If zoning denies what we're going to do, we haven't made any progress because there is, you know, there just is absolutely no Plan B. Mr. Lineback, last week, when I asked him, had anything changed with the ordinances, he said no. He said that they were just going to make, you know, a better argument. I don't know what that argument is, but much like I would drive a car before I would test the car before I bought it, I would kind of like to know what the argument is before I paid for it. My big concern on this obviously is without a Plan B, if it's rejected by the zoning hearing board, the board, this board is faced with the same issue from four years ago, which is after appeal, if we lose the appeal, does this board then decide once again to sue Exeter Township for relief in Burts County Court?
Mike, you know, if I can just jump in there, I didn't cut you off, right? I, that was not my intention.
No, you're just responding to what I said.
Okay, I, I thought I heard a noise and I was like, I didn't mean to cut him off. You know, I, I think maybe I should have used some different verbiage on the code issue. What we'd seek relief for from the zoning hearing board is to the zoning ordinance, which is the local set of laws, as you know. The code issues that we would not be able to find relief for in the construction of a facility at our current site is the Uniform Construction Code. And it's my understanding that the township does not have the authority to gain, to grant us certain exemptions from that. And that in good sense, I think in some of them, they would not. And that's the problem with the size of that site is that it was originally constructed in 1970 and I don't even believe, I, I think I have my dates right there in the, in the 1970s. And the Uniform Construction Code, to my recollection, was not even created at that point. And that's really the run up that we have. Beyond that, you mentioned the previous lawsuit that the township and the school district were engaged in with one another. I would not support a lawsuit against the township if they exercise their legal right as a political subdivision. But on the same token, I don't understand why that's entering the discussion right now. There's never been any intimation of that that I'm familiar with while this board's been incumbent. I'm not sure that anybody has said that in any public meetings. So I, I really am concerned that that is being brought up as a reason to not support doing this because there's a potential that we could decide a lawsuit. I certainly would not support that. I, I sincerely doubt that there would be the votes to do something like that. In addition to that, the argument really is about the accessory structure use. And probably what we'd use is some of the recommendations that Judge Lilis actually gave us while we were in court in recommending that we needed to make a different argument on a different portion of the zoning ordinance. And it's escaping me what the specifics of that were right now. But he actually laid out a program for us to consider that. And he actually put that to the township attorneys, as I recall, that was in the decision letter. And what we had been, what was briefed to us by our attorney. And the township's response was, well, we, we're kind of not at that process anymore. So I think what we're really trying to do is pursue this in the most appropriate way. And on top of that, I think we need to make an appeal to the Board of Supervisors to come in on behalf of our recommended plan. I think that we need to make a cogent and, and important argument in case to the Board of Supervisors so that they would support us in front of the zoning hearing board as well. Because I think that that's really going to be a key piece. Because I think that that's really going to be a key piece and I believe that the relationship that you and I and the rest of the board has been establishing with the Board of Supervisors and their understanding of the current facility really makes that a possibility that they will support our case. You know, it's unfortunate that the costs associated here are so significant. And I really don't want to be the person who's cheerleading the, the expensive projects. But in reality, we need to do something. And, and in regards to your Plan B comments, you know, I agree, we, we definitely want Plan B. I think Plan B is to current, is to limp on with the current facility. And if we're forced to do that, we're forced to do that. That's the will of the board. I won't be supporting that if I can help it. But, you know, if that's the will of the board, that's the will of the board. But I think the reason that we're going for Plan A is because this is the best plan we've got. And sometimes, you know, there aren't Plan B, C, and D. And unfortunately, I think that's what this situation is like. We don't have a good Plan B. Because the options that are available to us include purchase of new property and the preparation that goes along with that. And that, that would just be exorbitant. I mean, we could potentially be paying a million dollars for an additional site location, go through the same process of the zoning issues, and then beyond that, spend four point two million dollars to build the same facility. And, and I think that really goes probably back to some people's concern, well, why are we building the facility in the first place? Really comes down to the necessity of providing transportation for our students.
So we're in the middle of a pandemic. We have furloughed all of our bus drivers. We don't know what education's going to look like three to six months from now. Perhaps five hundred kids will decide, hey, I like the virtual option. So I, I would think that some suggestion that we take a pause and sort of think about what the implications are of COVID on the school district operations sort of makes sense. But again, I will come back to Plan B because in the absence of any other option, if we lose in zoning, we didn't make any progress.
Well, the other option I think is to repair the roof and start there. Yeah, so if, if the board is going to reject moving forward and making progress with this, then I, I think we need to do that ASAP. And I'm not saying to vote on the project tonight, but we need to get quotes. But I, I do want to go back to something that you mentioned in taking a pause with this. You know, I think, I think that that's a well-made point to understand because we want to narrow the cost that we're looking at and, and we've talked about some ways to do that. And even our architects have intimated that they were looking at different ways to do that as well. I think the best way to realize that and, and what I heard, what I've heard in the past, and I think that this is a really good, really good quote that I'm going to steal, is the cheapest place to build is on paper. And we've got more time to do that. The schedule that the architects have laid out for us, which allows a three to four month zoning hearing process, gives us that time. Beyond that, we have time that we need to finalize all of our building plans in. And we can do that for the rest of the school year, even into next summer, where we don't have to make a decision on issuing new money. But I don't think that negates our ability to seek the zoning relief now and find out. Because what's the point of taking a pause, doing all that work, and then doing the zoning application only for it to come back negative? And, you know, I, I think that there's a good argument to be made that we should just try and get as much information as we can. I don't think we can get the information we need to move forward with the project without that zoning variance.
Hey, if I could just jump in on the conversation here. You know, one of the things that occurs to me that if we, if we wouldn't go forward, you know, and wouldn't accept the motion this evening, we essentially have no Plan A. And, and that's the thing that concerns me. We basically wiped it off the table. And, and really it will not have really resolved the question as to whether or not it's even an option. I mean, the, the whole, the whole, very simply, I mean, the whole purpose of this process is to determine whether or not this is something that we can even move forward with. And we can't even expect the response from the, from the township and the zoning hearing board for another three, potentially five months, you know, from now. You know, certainly that, that gives us a little bit of time to, to kind of help explain maybe to the public why this particular project is essential. I know we heard a lot at the workshop meeting from Bill Lineback and he pretty much explained, you know, the, 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 the project at a Wotton, but, but we never really maybe did the same level of discussion with the reasons why the current site and the conditions that exist there are sorely lacking and, and seriously deteriorated. I'd have to agree with just about all of Hunter's points. My big, one of my big concerns is that five years from now, ten years from now, when, you know, we're looking at the facility as still having, you know, being inadequate, we would have put almost a million dollars in, into this current facility and, and realizing that it really has no future for us. I think it's wasted money. I think it's, it's, as, as Hunter had pointed out, it's, it's a Band-Aid and it, and it, and it, I think it's, it's a project that we have sort of ignored over the past forty-five years. While we've done a lot of work with all of our other facilities, for the most part, to kind of bring them up to code or to improve them significantly, we haven't really done a thing with transportation over forty-five years. We've pretty much inherited this location. And, and from what I can tell, virtually every board up to this point has been very supportive of the, of the idea of trying to move this, this project along. And until it was stopped by the zoning hearing board, I think there was every intent of trying to move it, move it forward and, and to get it completed. So it's, it's, it's one of those things that I think falls into our Capital Projects campaign. To me, it, it's, you know, it's essential if we were going to really establish this height idea that we are running, you know, transportation services here in the school district. But I think at the, getting back to the, this, this particular motion, the motion is simply to determine whether a variance can be acquired and whether or not this, our Plan A is even Plan A. And if it's not, then we know that we have to, we have to step back and, and, and take an inadequate approach and either repair the, the current facility or seek something else, which will most likely be, you know, more costly. What we have, or we have property and we have a plan already in place. Just my thoughts.
What I'd like to say is, first of all, I, I'm for definitely building a transportation center. I think we definitely need one. But I kind of agree with, you know, Mr. Giappino on this one too, as well as terms of a Plan B or even a Plan C. Now, one Plan B, and maybe we can go back to the variance board about this as well, is some, so one thing that has changed in the last, I guess, couple of months right now is that we do have Happy Landings. And they want to kind of give it back to us or, you know, in some kind of program with that. Are they willing to let us do something with Happy Landings and turn that into a Bus Air Depot? Or maybe refix Loush into a full-out all-purpose building administration bus depot type of project? Is, is that possible to even ask for that type of variance as well?
That, that I, I think, you know, previous boards have scoured the entire district, not only the district in terms of what we have available to us in terms of our own property, but anything else that's within the township itself as a potential option for us. And if you look back at the record, you know, you'll see a history of, of, of work that's gone into this whole thing. And, and it's unfortunate because we move into a whole new series of new board members and a new process. And we lose sort of that collective momentum that had been established previously based upon everything that all the work had have been done. But there, there are, there, there is an historical record. I think Ann provided, you know, some of that information to us, you know, you know, previously. So, you know, we, we should really go through and, and kind of examine all the things that have really been attempted so far. But, you know, the Happy Landings, you know, area, from what I understand, was deemed inappropriate. It's in a floodplain. And not really, you know, suitable for, for construction from what we understand.
I can add my comments to this. I, I truly appreciate all the work that's been put into this. I do respect it. But I can't help thinking, before thinking as a board member, I will always think as a community member. And in that, I say in my mind, in the beginning of the year, we told the community that we had to raise taxes because we couldn't make budget. Even with what we raised taxes, how we raised it, it still wasn't going to be enough. I know we're saying we're not going to borrow money for this, but we're still using township, community money for this. The other thought in my head is we're being told also that Loush, the administration building is only being half utilized and we have space there. And I just feel like that's something that should be truly considered, looked into further. I understand it's been looked to in the past. But I would like to see those records that showed why Jackson Wald, I'm sorry, Loush cannot be considered. Again, as a community member, I think, let's put a new roof on the building and let's move, move on and get through this COVID before we put this kind of chunk of money even into consideration. That's where my head is. So that's why I'm going to vote no.
Can I just say too, it's not, it's not just the roof that we have issues there as well. We've got, you know, underground storage tanks that are over forty years old. Probably should have been replaced ten years ago, at the very least. And, you know, the danger there is that if they fail, if they leak, that we could potentially have hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of cleanup.
Right, can we at least come to the community with what it would cost for the roof and for having that removed? So they know what the, because as Michelle said earlier, I, I think the community, they just don't know, they're not hearing all of this. And I understand it's been reviewed in the past and in the committee meetings and but I just feel like all this information should be put out there.
Yeah, what I don't understand is that, you know, any of those additional plans don't really obviate, you know, the, the whole idea that we couldn't go to the township and just seek, you know, the variance and see whether or not that option remains for us. I mean, it, it, it's, it's a way to kind of test, you know, whether or not we can, we can even implement Plan A. And if we, 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 we can't be successful, then obviously, you know, we can start to, you know, to pump, pump money in there, I suppose, for the long term. I just, I just feel bad for the, for the community. To speak for the community, I'm part of the community too. And I, I don't want to really see a project that's going to only, only be good for five or ten years when we really need something that's going to be important for us for the next thirty, forty, or fifty years. And, and the plan on the table right now really gives us an extended, you know, opportunity to, to kind of invest, in, in, invest in a, in a, an important project that will sustain us for a long time to come. I think we're missing a big opportunity. If we just ignore that and just not approve this and just wipe Plan A right off the table.
But wiping Plan A off the table might get us to a Plan B.
I'll just say, Mike, you know, I think everybody's been looking for a Plan B for a long time. You know, there's been decades of work on Plan B. And we're, we're no closer to Plan B and we're, and we're still standing around watching a, a, a site deteriorate. So I think taking it off the table right now is, I mean, this is, this is a, this is not a big investment for us to do. You know, this is, this is not a costly process for us to do is to, is to seek the variance. It, it does test the question. It, it resolves the issue to some respect. It puts it to bed if necessary, or at least opens it up, opens up the opportunity. In the meantime, we have a chance to educate our public in terms of the conditions that currently exist. And in that three to five month period of time, can certainly start to work on other plans that might include B, C, and D. Is there any further discussion on this topic before we take this to a vote?
Well, I'm not sure that we addressed Mr. Fiddler's question.
So, are you asking, or are you asking for us to table this motion?
I, yes, that, yes, let's, I'll just say simply yes.
Okay, well, that, that takes precedence then, from what I understand. I mean, I defer to Mr. Katz on that, but I think, am I correct, Mr. Katz?
You're correct, no debate. Well, there needs to be a second and then no debate.
Okay, so we need a second and then we'll take a vote. And this is on, again, this is on, the vote is to table this particular motion, which is to author, authorize the architects to seek the necessary variance with the township.
Correct, and I think in doing so, we can then, to do what some others have suggested, develop the information, share that information to the public. And again, Hearing said it very well, that we get everything we know about this situation into the public's eye and, and hands, eyes and hands, and then we can also educate ourselves and I think make a better decision.
And so can we, if we
Can I just say there's no discussion on this? And I think, Mr. Katz, am I correct, with, with a motion to table, there's really not, there's no longer any, any opportunity to talk about the motion?
No, well, was, I, I've been heard a second. Did I hear a second on the motion to table?
We have a motion and a second, okay?
No debate.
No debate. Okay, all in favor of tabling the motion, say aye.
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 Those opposed? No?
No.
No.
I'm hearing maybe three noes and maybe, can we have a roll call? Mrs. Gaddish. This is the motion to to table this, this, this particular item. Mrs. Gaddish, are you with us?
I am. Mr. Aaron?
No.
Mr. Fiddler?
Yes.
Dr. Herring?
No.
Dr. Hamburger?
No.
Mr. Giappino?
Yes.
Dr. McLendon?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Stratton?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
No.
Four noes, five yeses.
So the motion is tabled. And we'll move on to the next item in the agenda. Mr. Fiddler?
I was recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following item, ratify the following change orders for the Jackson Wald Elementary and Lorraine Elementary HVAC projects.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
John, do, do you mind if I say something in, in this portion of the meeting?
I think Dave is the president. I don't, I don't mind.
Go ahead, Hunter.
Could we have a board member or two board members kind of take point on this kind of communications plan that we're looking for with the community? This is a big project and issue that I think we should really owe it to ourselves to find resolution on. And I think that there's an opportunity here for us to kind of circle the wagons with the conversation that's been had this evening and not spin wheels with this. Because it has seemed to me that over the past, you know, couple of years, that this has been a discussion topic. The board has not been satisfied with the way that the administration has kind of run with this. So I'm wondering if, you know, one or two members of the board could kind of take the lead on kind of saying, here's a list of things that I'd really like to see us put into an, a, a Word document. And we'll take the lead on presenting that at the next meeting. Because I really think that, you know, I, I don't, I don't know what's going to satisfy the group. And I think to put that in the arms of the administration and just point them back at each meeting and say, okay, next month I want this or next month I want this. So I think that there would be some value in, in kind of picking some point people here.
Hunter, why, why don't we defer this back to the Facilities Committee? Okay. And allow the Facilities Committee to continue to work on generating the necessary documentation to, to provide sufficient information for the public. Working with the administration, obviously.
And I mean, I kind of started this, so I just want to say, you know, what I'm thinking of is the ad hoc committee did a fantastic job looking at all kinds of information regarding this, you know, just getting that out into people's hands, making that more accessible and, and it was already public, but making that more accessible to people so they can see what we already know or what we should know. And then for the board members that just came on in December, have they seen it yet? And if not, making sure that they've seen all that. That's what I would like. We already have all that.
Yeah.
You guys have done a great job gathering information.
Michelle, I would, I would just say too, I mean, I think an FAQ of some kind or some kind of a online, you know, series of documents would be probably helpful to really help people understand. Because we really haven't explored with the public, the conditions of the current facility at all and what it would take, let's say, to kind of bring that up to an acceptable standard. I personally don't believe there is an acceptable standard, but you know, we, we want to at least explain that, explain why, you know, that particular location is problematic. Whether it's the location because of Shellborne being a problematic road, or whether it's, you know, the size limitations of the site or the costs associated with, you know, trying to refit a, an older building. So I, I would suggest we, we let the Facilities Committee, you know, dig back into it again. If, if folks are comfortable with that and and then hear back from the Facilities Committee at a later date in terms of, you know, what, what, you know, what's available.
I would also love to see pictures or videos of the facility made public. So that people can see what we know.
That's a great idea.
I, Dr. Hamburger, I'd also like to make a motion at this time to direct the administration to provide a cost assessment of what it would take to replace the roof at the current facility. And that's a formalized quote, not a, not a staff identity or not staff identifying a number.
Can I just add something to that or just to maybe just to give you a thought is what about the, what about the storage tanks?
Do you want to do two separate motions or do you want me to take it and I'll add it back?
I'm just wondering whether you want to add, add those into your motion.
So I'll retract my motion and then I will, I, I guess I can't technically do that. Robert's real supportive, but we're not going to be that picky. I make a motion that the board directs the administration to provide quotes for the improvement or replacement of the current transportation facility's roof, as well as the extraction improvement or any appropriate terminology for the rehabilitation of the underground storage tanks. And that those costs be separated out so we can understand what the separate implications of both of them are.
And maybe to prevent coming back month after month, could we also ask for any other safety related matters about the existing site that we should be paying attention to now, in addition to the roof and the underground tanks?
I appreciate where that's coming from, but I think I'll stick with the motion that I made. Cause I think we know that these are the two most immediate challenges, especially the roof. And I think trying to get some type of grasp on what those costs would be is the first step. If we want to make a second motion, you know, so be it. But I also think that what you're kind of alluding to, John, is a, it's a punch list item of multiple things and that, that's going to take some time to develop. Whereas I think if the board's directing the administration to do this, this is something that we should be able to get back before the end of the year.
Oh, but I think if we limit it to safety related items, then we know we won't see, you know, new vending machines in the common area. We would just limit it to safety related items.
I think we have a motion on, on the table right now and maybe John, we can flush that out.
I think John's suggesting he wants to amend the motion. Is that what you're suggesting, John?
Yes, I think so. Yes. I just don't want to have to come back and say, well, there's a, there's a a pump facing somewhere. Okay. Well, let's, let's, you know, let's get a quote for that. If we're going to get quotes, let's get quotes for the roof, the underground storage tanks and any other safety related items having to do with the original, with the existing site.
Well, I mean, if you're going to go that, to that degree, you know, I mean, then, then you could be kind of talking about what about the entire renovation of the entire site? I mean, that, that entire, that entire project, you know?
If it's, if it's safety related, then, then it should go on the, on the list. I'm trying to limit it to just safety related items, not convenience, not cosmetic. But anything that has to do with the health and safety of, of the people who work there and, and of the general public, I just think should be on the list.
Well, I think that that's something that the committee could explore, but I think that these are the issues that are most transparent to the board. If the board doesn't want to support this motion, then we can do an amended one. I just personally think that we need to start making some progress and I worry that that's just very open ended of a motion. And it's going to be difficult to maintain accountability with the provision of that information.
I guess what I don't understand is that there's been this passionate explanation that there's all these problems with the facility and we don't have a itemized list that we can't lay in front of us tomorrow.
So I will amend my motion to provide quoting for the last two items that I did. And also to ask the administration to provide the board a list of additional security or safety concerns that they have with the facility. But those will not be quoted out immediately. So we can understand the scope of that list first.
Okay. So we have a motion and do I hear a second?
Second.
Did somebody say they seconded?
Second is, is me hearing.
Okay. Thanks, Yuri. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Are we ready to move on or do we want to, are there any further motions associated with this topic? Okay. I think we're ready to, to move on. Looking at the agenda, see where we are. Sorry, I'm having a hard time seeing it. We're after facilities, we're at the Policy Committee. That's me. I, I would say that there is no report from the Policy Committee. Item 17, Student Functions Committee, Mrs. Stratton.
No report.
Thank you, Mrs. Stratton. Item 18, Technology Committee, Mr. Miller.
No report.
Thanks, Mr. Miller. Item 19, Extra Community Ed Foundation, Dr. Herring.
Yes. Let's see. ECEF and the Alumni Association are proud to announce the new addition of named bricks. Year two bricks have been installed at the Wanamaker Eagle statue in front of the high school. Weather depending, the second bench will be installed at the Eagles Nest above Don Thomas Stadium in memory of attorney Jack Linton in the coming days. ECEF is pleased to share that one of Exeter's wish list items, a new book giveaway for young readers was funded in total by teachers in the park. So thanks to Tips for stepping up and making this happen. We've also received bags from Spine and Wellness in addition to pencils from Exeter Township Fire Department to complete the touchless selection of books. And that's it.
Thanks, Dr. Herring.
Dr. Hamburger, may I just make a comment on?
Yes, please.
I just, I really do want to extend my thanks on behalf of the entire district, ECEF and Tips. There's been some significant research on the value of students having books that they own in terms of furthering their reading progress and, and really Tips and ECEF rushed in as soon as they, you know, heard there was a potential need to help and support all of our students in the district who, who may not have access to books that they own in their home. So I have just been, I think Mrs. Harris said earlier today, it doesn't take long to become a proud Eagle. I think I, I was just beaming when she said that because it's, it's so very true. Every time I turn around, there's just somebody doing something wonderful for the district. And, and I just want to extend an extra special thanks on, on behalf of everyone for that.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. We'll move on to Burke's Career and Tech Center. Dr. McLendon?
Hey, I have a few things. It's not from our meeting because we last met on August 5th and I gave that report last month. But I did receive an update from Dr. Craft and I just wanted to share a couple of things from that. And that's just that, so he has, they completed the three successful weeks of school at the Career Tech. All 16 school districts, students are either in person five days, excuse me, per week. Or they're following their district hybrid schedule. And all the students have a minimum of at least two days to be at the Career Tech Center. They would like to see that increase. I'm sorry, but as you know, you know, it's all hands, it's most majority hands on. So they really didn't have the students, students in the building. And the student build house project settlement was held on September 10th. That went very well. And the students have started, well, they had already started working on this, the new student built house and they're hoping to have that under roof by the winter. We have our next meeting, September 23rd. They're currently doing hybrid, a hybrid meeting for that. And that's all I have for the C, BCTC meeting. I mean, report. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. McLendon. ECIU Board of Directors, our next meeting is this Thursday, September 17th via Zoom conference call. Legislative Liaison, Mr. Fiddler?
Nothing to report.
Thanks, Mr. Fiddler. Township Borough Liaison, Mr. Japina?
I have nothing to report.
That's the end of our committee reports. At this time, are there any board members who would seek to be heard?
Yeah, I have something, Dave, if I could, but if somebody else wants to go first, I would gladly yield.
You have a floor, John.
Thank you. I just want, wanted to congratulate all of us, starting with Dr. Minor for the planned expenditures to improve our math and reading scores. It's the grant money. I think the total is $218,000. And I think that's one example of a conversation that I think we ought to have more frequently and, and more seriously. And that is on academic quality here at Exeter. Besides the troublesome test scores that really were the impetus to get me to run for this board seat. I first learned two Octobers ago about our, our little third graders who were scoring below 40% on their standardized tests. I think it was math. And I never did get a, an adequate explanation for that. There, there are some other indicators that concern me. The first is the most recent ranking of our high school by US News and World Report. We are ranked 14th out of 18 public high schools in Burke's County. And as a, as a proud graduate of Exeter High School, I find that concerning and embarrassing. Particularly since last year, the same ranking at Exeter at 12th in Burke's County. So we've dropped two notches or two places in just a year. The, and I encourage all of you to read the US News and World Report study. The two factors, the two factors that are most troubling are the AP section and the, again, the test scores. The totaling 80% of the, of the ranking is attributed to poor performance in the AP scores testing and courses and the reading and math comprehension scores. The other concern of mine is that Exeter has never been, to my knowledge, nominated or placed on the Washington Post list of the most challenging high schools in the nation. In fact, the only school district I'm aware of that is on that list is Wyomissing. And I see no reason why Exeter couldn't be on that list. By the way, Wyomissing is also number one on the US News list, followed by Wilson, Boyertown, Schuylkill Valley and Olley Valley. And as I said about the most challenging list, I see no reason why Exeter can't be in the top five on the US News and World Report ranking. So I, I would hope that Dr. Minor's initiative with the expenditures to improve our scores would kind of inspire us all to work to improving the academic quality, the edu, the quality of the education our students here are receiving. Because I just don't think it's there, given these three very important indicators, test scores, US News and World Report ranking of the high school, and the fact that Exeter has never appeared on the most challenging high school list as published by the Washington Post. So thank you for listening and I hope, again, I hope this inspires us all.
Make a comment on Mr. Fiddler's?
Yes, please.
First of all, you know, I, I do want to thank the board for their support of the purchase this evening through the grant funds. I do think it's an important step in the right direction. I, as I stated during the Education Committee, I think we have the teaching staff, the support staff, the special education staff, the, the board, the community and the students to improve dramatically here at Exeter in term of our, in terms of our academic test results. And I'm confident we'll do that. I do want to just make one comment in particular about the US News and World Report, that is a lagging indicator. They do use data that is a couple of years old, depending on what particular metric they're using. And then given that last year, a lot of the testing was canceled due to COVID-19. I imagine that that data will even, even lag further. So I agree wholeheartedly that Exeter should be at the top of that list and can be at the top of that list. I do want to just point out that that is one, unlike PSSAs, which is an immediate turnaround and you can see quick results. It does take a number of years to see them show up, both in terms of a decline, as, as Mr. Fiddler mentioned, or an increase. So just want to make sure the board was aware of that. And I am certain that Dr. Winters and I would be happy if Dr. McLendon would wish, you know, as part of the Education Committee meeting to spend more time moving forward on giving the board updates regarding our progress in terms of academic achievement. It's a passion of mine. I know it's a passion of Dr. Winters and Mrs. Harris and our entire team. And I think we'll be extremely proud of the results that we're able to share with the board over time. So thank you.
Just a quick question, given, given the lag that you alluded to, I mean, we deal with this in healthcare too, in terms of some of the lagging data, but there is more current data from other sources. So I wonder if you've sort of been able to replicate some of the concerns that John has with some of the data that's out there that might be more current. And if so, maybe we hear about that data that might sort of in, in effect refute you know, what we've heard. But, but to that end, I appreciate, John, you sort of bringing us back to the core reason that we're a school board is to address the quality of education in the district. And, you know, hopefully we get through COVID and we get back to focusing on, you know, those issues. Not to say that people haven't lost their focus, but the board certainly has spent an enormous amount of time on other issues. So I don't know, is there data that would, that, that perhaps is more current that would refute what John has stated?
No, Mr. Japina, thank you for mentioning that. In, in no way, shape or form do I wish to refute that Exeter's data does not represent what I think Exeter could, could be doing. I think one of the reasons that I'm, I'm proud to be superintendent and wanting to be superintendent of Exeter Township School District is I think it has all of the components to not only be the top school in Burke's County, but to be the, one of the top schools in Pennsylvania, if not the nation. I really do believe that we have all of the fundamental ingredients. And so, you know, I, I think the data has been very disappointing. And I, and I think although I just wanted to make clear in the US News and World Report that I'm not exactly sure where their standings are at present relative to the county, I think that there are many areas that we can improve. at present relative to the county, I think that there are many areas that we can improve. Some of the factors with the U.S. News and World Report that I would like to point out are a strength for Exeter. And we actually ranked in the top of the county list, for instance, our Algebra One Keystone scores, which is a very difficult metric. And we excelled in that particular metric of the U.S. News and World Report. But we have fallen behind in items such as graduation rate. And one of the things that I actually have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Way and Mr. Campbell and Dr. Winters and others is I'm not certain frankly, how early graduation impacts our reporting relative to graduation rate. I have signed multiple early graduation requests in the time that I've been here. And certainly, you know, that's a benefit to our students, that potential to graduate early, you know, due to our block schedule and other things that allow them to acquire credits. But one of the things that our team needs to look into is how the four-year graduation cohort rate is reported to PIMS and then ultimately reported to U.S. News and World Report. So some school districts are penalized, for instance, for students who are able to stay in school until they're 21 years old due to special education. And we may be being penalized. I don't know that for a fact, but it's something that we need to look into for having some students actually finish early. So we're looking at some things that it may just be reporting issues because I, I find Exeter's ranking not only just troubling in general, but kind of, I would say, not kind of, definitely surprising. So I want to make sure that there's no reporting problems and that the data that's going to U.S. News and World Report is accurate. As to indicators that are generally immediately available, AP scores every year come out and are available to the district. And we can certainly look year over year and in comparison to other schools. SAT scores, ACT scores, AP participation, PSSAs in years that they're given, keystones in years that they're given. And then we are also collecting data from our assessment in our elementary grades as well as F and P benchmark assessments. And we do a lot of providing of information to the school board relative to our SPP scores, actually I should say our future ready index that was formerly the SPP, but that, that has changed. Those, in fact, I just got notification that those reports are coming out shortly. Again, we're, we're, it's going to be a hard year because we didn't have PSSAs in the spring. But there are a number of things and we can provide those to the board, you know, with a, with a quick turnaround and, and talk about them in comparison to neighboring school districts.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure, I know you guys do that through curriculum. I'm not asking anybody to, you know, do anything special. I think it's, you know, much like we talked about the bus facilities, perhaps just creating more awareness and more communication to a wider range on a more frequent basis through more channels to just let people know how we're doing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have a few quick things. I just wanted to quickly thank Ann, also for her, you know, knowledge and dedication to the school district. I also wanted to just make a comment, you know, from, from myself. I've had a very positive experience so far with virtual learning with my kids. And I know it seems like a lot of times, you know, people are more inclined to, to say the negative than to say the positive. And I know I'm kind of in a unique situation. I'm able to work from home. I am juggling two children and a baby, so I wouldn't say it's easy. But, you know, I'm very proud of my boys, their learning resilience and independence and grit and all these wonderful things through this insane experience that we're all facing. And just that I'm very proud of the teachers. This is hard. It's hard for the teachers. It's hard for our kids. It's hard for the parents. It's hard for everyone. But I'm proud of our teachers and our, all of the staff at Exeter and the way that they're handling it. And then I just think it's worth repeating. We do not own the land at Giant. We did not buy Giant. We did not buy that facility. We cannot put our buses there because we do not own it. Okay? You can quote me. That is the township. That's all I got.
Thanks, Michelle. Are there any, are there any other board members who would like to be heard at this time?
Yeah, Dave, I didn't get to do athletics because I
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike, I should have gone back to you. That's my fault.
But no, I really didn't have a report, but since folks were, you know, giving a shout out to a few people. I, I really would like to give a shout out to Tom Legath. You know, I think that he has navigated a very difficult issue in which he had no control over and has tried to balance the the rightful approach by the district to think about the safety of the staff and the kids with trying to make sure that we had a safe space for, for athletics and other extracurricular activities to do things while also trying to follow what's going on in, you know, in Harrisburg with the PIAA, with the governor, with the legislature, with the Berks County Interscholastic Association. And, and trying in some respects to, to keep people from being completely depressed over all this stuff that's going on and trying to manage this information. And, you know, just trying to get us to some sort of a, a resolution. And I don't know what his phone bill is or what the mileage is on his cars, but probably pretty significant, but I just think he has gone, he has done a really good job of trying to deal with a very difficult issue.
Dave, we can't hear you.
Dave, we're not hearing you.
It looks like he's, yeah, it looks like he's unmuted, but we can't hear him anyway. So
We're not hearing you, Dave, even though you're unmuted.
Is it okay, Dave, if I just end the meeting? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
No move.
We're good.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.